I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education for, I have to look and see what the date is, March 10. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright.
Here.
Velvel.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone, excuse me, I've got a little bit of a cold. The reason why we're here today is in support of the Boulder Valley School District vision, and I will read it. We develop our children's greatest abilities and make possible the discovery and pursuit of their dreams, which when fulfilled will benefit us all. We provide a comprehensive and innovative approach to education graduate, successful, curious, lifelong learners who confidently confront the great challenges of our time. So we'll keep that in mind as we're thinking about the issues that we're talking about tonight. The first item on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Messenger.
Good evening, President Albright, members of the board. Welcome. Nice to have you at the reception earlier. Comment on that a bit later. So I've got a few items I'd like to brief you on. First of all, in February, we had a good conversation work session, I thought, on the budget development process, so I just wanted to remind you that we will come back together formally in that discussion on our work session in April. We have spring break coming up here, so we have a little break, but on April 21st, that's on your calendar. And so we're obviously continuing to monitor the work at the state legislature as, you know, some action today with the Joint Budget Committee to see where the proposed School Finance Act might come together, and so we're watching that really closely. And also, the conversation we had around the topics last time, the areas where we, if we have some discretionary additional money in addition to our employees, where we might invest those. So we're kind of working off of that list. We'll obviously bring that back and look for prioritization within that or what we can do. I would just ask if there are other areas you're thinking about that we haven't talked about? Don't hesitate to communicate that with me, and if we need to cost it out, we will. But that was at least our starting point, and we were a long ways from the end game, but we are in that development process. As we work through the next four to six weeks, we'll have a lot more information around where we are with our employees, around compensation and benefits, and also better idea, I hope, where the legislature is and other costs that we might build into other areas you might want to invest in. So just if you keep that on your radar screen, and I know you are, so thank you for that. A week from tonight, we'll be together for our work session, five o'clock work session, and our topic on the 17th will be, on St. Patrick's Day, will be the strategic plan. So Deirdre and I will be working with you to bring to you our progress to date. So we had a good session yesterday with our executive committee, with the representatives of Education Northwest. What we talked about the last time Deirdre and I presented, Dr. Pilch and I presented this, is that what we will bring to you a week are our areas, our priority areas, so we're focusing down, not 17, fewer than 17 now, areas that we're going to recommend that we go forward with, and also working with Education Northwest, reviewing our plans. We're going to pull some activities out of those 17 plans, and we're going to talk to you about that next week, and also what some outcomes will be and some key performance indicators. So what we plan to do is be able to kind of showcase one of the prioritized areas, sort of what it's going to look like. We won't have all the areas complete by next week, but it'll give you a sense of, does that look like to you? Does that look like it's going to work? And then we're, between mid-March and mid-April, we'll get the other areas built out in combination of our partnership with Education Northwest. So the other area we'll address next Tuesday evening will be around budget priorities with regard to the strategic plan. We understand that we aren't jumping to the front of the line with this, but it was one of the areas we talked to you about in February, so we'll come back to that again and maybe give a little more description about the kinds of things that we think would be aligned with those priority areas that we'll visit about next week, and what some budget, new budget dollars might do to support that. So that's a week from tonight. Look forward to that. Shifting gears, student assessment. Spent a fair amount of media around this the last week or 10 days, so BVSD was one of the districts that started our assessment last week. Many districts are starting this week, so you've probably read about that in the news media. The reason we started last week was because mostly the timing of our spring break, so that we had this multi-week, three-week window prior to break, so, and that's probably the reasons other districts did it as well. So we've gone through a process of parents don't want their children, students, to participate in the assessment, the state assessment, and they're, they need to alert the office, and then it's an excused absence. I'm just going to give you, these aren't official numbers, so, but this is, Jonathan checked this afternoon for me, so about six, 6% of our elementary students have opted, or parents have opted not to have them participate, and about 14% of our middle level, so a little more at the middle level. And it looks like we're still at about 40% of our high school age students whose parents have refused the assessment. So we'll get more exact numbers on those, and to date, we don't know if all of those are refusals, because if they're just absent, if they're ill or something, then they're not taking the test, but it might be for other reasons. But that's just a real quick recap. One of the things that we'll visit a little bit later in legislative update is on our agenda, I will give you a quick update on where we are with regard to legislation around student assessment, but I'll do that later. And the other thing, the other final topic I wanted to just visit with you about is negotiations, specifically BVA, Boulder Valley Education Association negotiations. You were involved in that back in January, and we have a date scheduled for Wednesday, April 8th, to reconvene, so that should be on your calendar, and we'll be sending you in the interim between now and then, I think just prior to spring break it'll work out, so the end of next week probably. A written update, just on the different committees, their work, kind of progress to date. We had said that we would do that, so we'll compile that information from the various committees, see, at least have a, can take a glance and see what works going on, and then obviously we'll reconvene on April 8th, and Diana Groves will facilitate that as she did back in January. So with that, President Albright, I'll conclude my report. I'd be glad to answer questions about that set of topics or any others.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? No. Tom? Jenny? No. Well, I'll be interested to see what the final numbers are in the PARC test.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just note that I certainly have received a lot of emails from a large number of parents who are, have opted their kids out. So I think they've contacted schools, but also board members and staff and legislators, which I think is exactly the right way to convey what their feelings are about these standardized tests, so we'll see what the final numbers are.
There's been a lot of good communication with the state board, with the commissioner of education, also with legislators, and we've done a couple blogs on that. I have, just to help inform folks of the process we're working through with legislation right now.
Okay. Well, one other thing I've just sort of noticed is how much staff time it's taking. I mean, in just so many ways. I mean, getting the instruments there, getting the devices there, setting it all up, organizing it all, but just the organizing has just been a nightmare.
Yeah.
I think, especially at the larger schools, probably the high schools, maybe the middle schools too, but I know it's been very, very difficult, and I'm glad that we're speaking up as a district at the state level about that. So thank you.
Yeah.
Continue to do that, and our lobbyists. Tom, maybe.
That does remind me of a question here. Are we still keeping track of expenses associated with administering the PARC test?
We are, Tom. One of the things that, we gave you that update, I think it was right at the end of November 1st to December, and so what our staff, two things. One is keeping track of the obvious cost, and then we actually did some random surveying. We didn't want to put that burden on everyone, but we reached out. So we have some teachers and principals at kind of each of the levels giving us some feedback, because what is hard to capture is just the amount of staff time that's, you know, in preparation, that's kind of a soft cost, but it takes a toll. So we're doing that through a survey format, and so we'll try to do some quantitative calculation based on just that random collection of elementary, middle, and high school. So, you know, we need to get through the May assessment, but then we'll compile a final report. Leslie, Staffer, our chief operating officer, took lead on that, and so she'll compile a final set of data. So by early summer, we should be able to say, at least looking back, that's what our findings were with regard to staff time and expenses and all of that information. This document that Leslie created in November has been circulated quite a bit. There's interest both at the legislative level and the state board level. So this will be a more complete document once we finish it, but we are collecting.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public participation and public hearing. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Present your presentation, or excuse me, limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we won't tonight, because I believe we have six people signed up, but if we did go over, we would, public comment would continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. Starting at green when you have your two, when your two-minute starts, it turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and it turns red at the end. And when the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board members can hear from the maximum number of speakers. So, thank you. We have several people signed up today, and the first speaker will be Luana Rubin, who will have four minutes. And Luana, I believe you've been given two minutes by Katie Walker. So thank you. Welcome. Glad to see you again.
Hello. I'm coming back again to the board to ask you for transparency in the Casey issue, please. I'm begging you at this point. I, since my daughter started attending Casey Middle School one and a half years ago, and she is now out of that school, I've spent over $3,000 on doctor visits, medical treatments, tests, attorney, consultants, more tests. Now our doctors advise us that we need to start treatment for my daughter's toxic exposure. After reviewing the symptoms my daughter has had since starting at Casey, and the list of symptoms that are consistent throughout many ill students and staff. Many different experts, including two doctors, have told me that we should also test for volatile solvents such as benzene. After finding a doctor who has experience with toxic exposure and doing a volatile solvent blood panel test, which many parents still find unaffordable, my daughter has tested positive for abnormally high levels of benzene and styrene. If you don't know what it is, look it up. It's really serious and very scary. Some may say this is not proof of these dangerous solvents being present in the school, but since taking this test was advised from the list of symptoms, doesn't it make sense to do a full-spectrum test for all possible toxic substances in the school, including benzene and styrene? You have a legal duty to keep our children safe when they attend public school. If you knowingly conceal toxic exposure of students, you are legally responsible. When you ask for test results, you are asking the wrong question. You should ask how many children have been reported sick with symptoms that are consistent with exposure to hydrogen sulfide, methane, CO2, benzene, styrene, and perhaps things like mold and bacteria. As I said two weeks ago, I have had experts give me a range of responses to my daughter's test results. I've had many experts and doctors now say that these numbers are quote-unquote "shockingly high." I've had those same words from three or four different people. Shockingly high specifically for a 12-year-old child. We're not talking about adults or industrial exposure. Your so-called experts apparently are saying that these levels are safe and normal, but they're obviously comparing to adult industrial levels. This has been brought up repeatedly here, and I just don't think that's hard, that hard to understand. When we point out to you and the health department are referring to adult industrial levels of safety, that the safe levels for children have repeatedly been exceeded, we still have no logical response to this fact. The levels of H2S and who knows what else are not safe for the children at Casey. Apparently, they're not safe for adults either, given the high number of teachers who have reported illness. My daughter is at another school, and she's feeling better now, but she still will need to be treated for toxic exposure. It is time to stop covering up the illness, the toxins, the facts, and get to work on a solution, a real solution, please. This is your legal obligation, and the community is not going to continue to put up with the letters and the other statements that continue to go out to the parents stating that the levels of toxins in the school are safe. Please, do your duty and take action now. Get the children out of that toxic soup, and tell us what our kids have been exposed to, please, so we can test and treat our children appropriately. I want to know what else my daughter has been exposed to at Casey. Board members, you must take the lead now, tonight, and please insist on action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Paul Schmidt. Paul?
Welcome.
Good evening to the board and to the community at large. I'm here from out of area at the request of family and friends with children in the school. Some associates of ours have done a research on the press, and I wanted to quote it a few items from E&amp;R Mountain State's reports, 1028-2011. Derek Young, project manager, RB&amp;B Architects, says it was tricky rebuilding on the site of the original Casey School, where expansive soils had caused walls to crack and floors to heave significantly. On April 10th, 2009, there's a citation for the geothermal process in Channel 7's news that 70 vertical boreholes were drilled at that site at a cost of $400,000. In a letter in recent weeks, Dr. Monty from the Public Schools Advisory Group at the Boulder Public Health Department cites review by him of 29 patient records with thiosulfate levels, and he found them below levels considered acceptable for exposure in a chemical environment. I need to comment to the board, if you're not aware of this, that these levels are normed against certain standards that don't actually identify the seriousness of the exposure. The norming process has three cultures within industrial health and safety, and the real issue is that the kids have on board more than a number of chemicals. It looks like you have benzene present in the environment. Furthermore, from a risk management standpoint, there's a critical issue with a number of abandoned mines in this area. You have a number of hazmat sites in the Boulder area. I understand recently there was a repair issue at the Russian Tea House. I know from years' work ago, here in the area, the Justice Center had a lead processing facility. So I think that in light of those issues, a full industrial site review should be done historically, and testing equipment should be put in the various ductwork in the facility at all floors. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and suggestions. Our next speaker will be Greg Marsh. Mr. Marsh?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am a concerned citizen, the last elected president of the Rocky Flats Cleanup Commission, and a founding and charter member of that same group. The debacle that I witnessed on the 24th of February in this room, and the problems with citizens not getting what they see as their, say, in this organization and justice for their children, is very similar to what we saw at Rocky Flats. Just that Rocky Flats was a billion times bigger and more convoluted than it is, complete with the same use of the omission, the crimes of omission when it comes to data and things that are, seem to be grossly missing from this group as well as Rocky Flats. For example, with the exception of the first speaker tonight, I haven't seen the phrase "mold and bacteria," and I'd like to ask for a show of hands, people in this room tonight who think that H2S can be a product of raw untreated black water, sewage, if you will, and not have elevated levels of mold and bacteria. Could I see those hands? Okay. Mold and bacteria has to be put on the agenda. Another word that I don't see, that I didn't see at Rocky Flats, is vetting. Who are these people, and what are their machinations, should that be the case? And where is the necessary funding for these things to be dealt with effectively and properly? Without that, you're not going to see it. All of this can be found at www dot forensic hyphen pro dot com. Other issues are available on that site too, and the site is not snooping, logging in, or other things like that, and it's not copyrighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Barry Ekins. Mr. Ekins, welcome.
Well, thank you. My name's Barry Ekins. I have a daughter at Platten Middle School, not at Casey. I've not actually been to Casey, but I've been here a few weeks, a few times, and listening to the testimony, and I've been quite concerned about what I've heard. I wanted to draw your attention to something that I think you're probably well aware of, but I, it seems like perhaps there's been some misunderstanding or some confusion about, in particular, I'm talking about the Quest analysis of the sewer line back in January, and their report dated February 3rd, talking about that sewer system. They draw attention to a couple things that I want to emphasize or point out. They drew a distinction between the onsite school sewer system and the outside-the-school regional city of Boulder sewer system. And what they noted in their conclusions was that the onsite school sewer system was positively pressurized pretty much throughout that whole assessment period, but not outside the school. And that's an indication that there's something in the school that is driving that pressurization of that, the onsite, the school sewer system. In particular, they showed quite a bit of a large fluctuation in pressure, both min and max, over brief periods of time. So I wanted to recommend two things that I think are worth looking at before I run out of time here. One is that a one-week period for assessing the school sewer system really wasn't long enough to correlate with other activities going on in the school, whether it be laundry facilities, the kitchen, other things, to see if there's something that's going on in the school that's driving pressurization of the sewer system that could be then a source of the gas orders that are there, and that's mentioned in their report. I think the other thing that's worth doing, and I'll just take another second, is doing a similar kind of sewer line assessment of other schools in the district. Take a look at other schools and ask, is this pressurization, is this common across schools, that they see this kind of pressurization, positive pressurization of the sewer system? Or is this something that's unique to Casey? Because I, my concern is that a lot of the, if the sewer system is the source of the gas orders that's affecting the school, then tweaks and adjustments to the ventilation system is really addressing the symptom, not the source of the problem. And so I think some further investigation of the sewer system is warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for your comments and suggestions. Our final speaker this evening is Catherine, is it Singy or Singley?
Singy.
Singy, thank you. Hi. And you have four minutes, given to you by Molly Hoverstruck.
Thanks, Molly.
So we're, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I just, I came today to just, first of all, thank the board members that came to our school last Friday, and I wish all of you had come. It was really, it seemed, for me, it seemed like additional eyes and additional minds are just what we need right now, and I really hope that you all work together to bring this situation to a solution where the air quality at Casey is safe for everyone. And I also, I wanted to say something about controversy, because I've learned so much about controversy through this process, because I've been pushing for a year to get the air quality at Casey safe for everyone. And I'm a pretty meek person. I don't complain very much. I'm pretty happy. I kind of love everybody. I love my job. I love working for Boulder Valley School District. So it's very hard for me to disagree with someone who I really respect, like Bruce, or Dawn, or Allison Boggs last year. So I just, I think controversy is not something to shy away from, but it's something to go towards, because I feel like when we work in a shared decision-making manner, which the district is really promoting right now, we can actually come to solutions, because I feel like a complex problem, and I know Deirdre has said this a lot, that this is a complex problem, and I can really appreciate that now more than ever. I feel like if we work together and we kind of let ourselves rub against each other in terms of the tension, that we can actually solve this. So I'm really going to ask everybody to not shy away from the controversy, and I'm talking to my colleagues here too, and just to understand that it actually might be the method with which we can actually come to some intelligent solutions and actually make Casey Middle School safe for everybody, everybody that walks in there. I'm sensitive. I've been as sick as Chris has told you last week. I'm not as outspoken about it, but all those symptoms I've also had, and I'm very much worried about children who tell me they're dizzy and nauseous and they can't breathe. And I really know that we can all work together. I really believe this with my heart, that we can, and my mind, and my intellect, and my logic, that we can solve this problem. I really believe it, and I'm asking all of you as board members and administrators to continue to do this until there is healthy air quality in Casey Middle School for every person that enters that school and works there and studies there and learns there. I believe that we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Board members, this would, the next item on our agenda is board communication. Sometimes we have comments and reactions to speakers, and sometimes we talk about what we've been doing or thinking about. Tom?
So I want to thank all of you for coming forward and talking to us. I appreciate you coming to us and talking to us in person, as well as all the emails that we received and other types of communication. We do have an agenda item tonight on Casey, so I'm going to, I'm going to reserve a lot of my comments until then, but I would like to say I was one of the board members that went out and toured Casey last Friday. I had a list of rooms and areas in the school that people had commented were, that they felt were problematic, and so I met with Dawn and, and the principal there, and we, Justin, and we toured the building, and, you know, they were very gracious to show me everything I asked for. We went to some of the rooms that were in question, the library and the computer room off the library, went up to some of the upstairs rooms, 305, and some of the computer rooms up there. We went, saw some of the kitchen, went down into the basement area, which is like, I view it like a crawl space. It's dirt floor, and that's where the, the system that, that the pipes go into the boreholes actually circulate the antifreeze, you know, down into the boreholes and then bring it up and exchange the heat within the system underneath there. So it was very, it was very good for me to be able to see the school in ways that I haven't seen it before, to look at the school in context of the many, many, you know, comments we have gotten. I probably received somewhere on an order of 150 emails relative to that. And to be able to ask questions of a number of items, and so I won't go into those details now, we'll save those for the agenda item, but I ask you, please stay and listen to this discussion. I, you know, from my visit there, I felt there was poor air movement in the building, a lot of stagnant air, and we'll get into that a little later on, but I just wanted to preface that to say, you know, hang on, let's address this during the agenda item. Thank you for coming again.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks. Anyone else?
Sure.
Sam?
I'll also hold my Casey comments for later, but thank you all for coming and for your constructive comments. I just wanted to remark on the reception that we attended, most of us, the National Board Certification for Teachers. I think that's the fourth one I've been to, and it is consistently one of the most inspiring events that I attend as a board member. Where you see tonight 14 teachers who have taken the initiative. I think one of them said she wanted to breathe new life into her teaching practice. The perseverance and the dedication and the hard work that goes into getting that certification is something that is inspiring to me as a board member and as a parent in the BVSD. And we have some 20% of all the board-certified teachers in the state of Colorado in this district, and that's fabulous. So congratulations to all the folks who do that. Thanks to the administrative team, Dr. Cabrera, who supports that, and Virginia Schick at Boulder High, who has been the guiding light for that program for many years. It's just terrific that our teachers are going the extra mile to be the best teachers they can be.
Tina?
Yeah, I just also wanted to thank the people who came and spoke tonight. It's great to hear from you. And just to comment on the National Board Certification. It was very exciting, because my daughter's teacher was recognized today. So that's always fun for us. And I also just wanted to make a comment about the Parent Engagement Network. I attended a presentation last night with Michael Vladek on raising kids in the digital age. And it was so terrific and so well-attended. I think there were 80 parents who came to hear about that. And it just continues to be such a valuable part of what BVSD has to offer as we try and struggle through the parenting maze outside of, at the home, and a really good backup to what we're trying to do to help our kids be successful. So thanks.
Jim?
So I'd like to echo the comments, the thank yous for the comments. Tonight, I found them to be more constructive in the past, and I can feel people wanting to get to a problem as much as, as they can, or get to a solution and work through the issues and hopefully get their questions answered and restore a bit of trust. Also, my daughter's teacher for next year was one of the teachers that was awarded tonight, or earned that National Board Certification. And that, for me, that'll be the first teacher any of my daughters have had, even though they've had multiple opportunities, they just seem to keep missing them. But all of those teachers are certainly inspirational. And it was a really well-run event, so thank you.
Great. Shelley?
Well, if we're going to one-up here, my daughter's, our teacher, is the mentor for the whole program. I just want to say thank you again to all the people who spoke about Casey. And again, I'm going to hold my comments, other than to say thank you to Justin and to Dawn for taking us on the tour last Friday. It made a world of difference to see the building and hear more about the ventilation issues. Like, all the emails I've received started to make sense once I could actually see the building. So I encourage anybody who has time to go and do that. It was extremely helpful. So again, I'll hold the rest of my comments until we have our Casey update. But I did want to draw the board's attention to this document that Sandy made for all of you. It is the DACS. The DAC went out and tallied all of the schools and asked them about their budget priorities as we go into the budget process. And as you can see, the top three priorities were counselors in the elementary schools, reduced class sizes, and reversing the budget cuts, with full-day kindergarten a close fourth. And what was interesting is that elementary and secondary schools really didn't differ that much, except for a slight greater emphasis on school security and professional development in the high schools and middle schools. But I think this is pretty clear that this is, these are the things that our schools want. And it's pretty consistent with what we're talking about doing. So I was encouraged by this. I think we're on the right track as we look at our budget priorities. So I encourage you to look at this more. And when we go into our next discussions, keep this in mind when we talk about what we want to do. So thanks.
Thank you. Did everybody get a copy of that? Did you get a copy? Let's just make sure that we've got a copy of it.
Yeah. So this came from DAC, and Shelley and I are liaisons to DAC. And so they handed us there. And they're working through this. I don't want to steal their thunder. So I want to let them send it out. But one comment was interesting. Barry, who spoke tonight, is on the DAC. And he helped me to see things in a little bit better light that I hadn't realized before. Along these areas here of these needs, he had listed FTE, 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 everything that FTE would address in terms of if you gave the schools FTE, then, and let them decide how to restore the cuts. Which I hadn't looked at it that way before. We've been talking about, you know, student-teacher ratios, or even class sizes, and potentially, you know, changing that with budget this year. But it's more than that. It's if we let the schools decide what to do with that FTE, they'll address a number of these items as that school wants to. So that was, thank you for that insight, Barry. And I think it's very powerful. I hope I didn't steal too much of their thunder, but we'll be hearing from them.
And there was no email with it. It was just the hard copy handed out.
Thanks. Jenny? Jenny?
Well, thanks for the handout, Shelley and Tom. And thank you for the speakers who came tonight. And you're right, and to the board members who mentioned the National Board Certification. It was great. And I would like to thank Sam and Bruce. I had a closet to clean out this week, so I went to my radio, or I went to my email, and I followed the link to the KGNU program you all did. Not that you were helping me clean my closet, but you were, because, yes. I appreciate that. So I listened to the program that you all had done with Lori Shepherd on KGNU. And I'd like to make, thanks Sam for making the board sound like we know what we're doing. And Bruce and Lori for having some really intelligent remarks. Every time I hear Lori Shepherd talk about assessment, I learn something. And so I'd recommend anybody out there to go to the KGU. And the interviewer was very good, too. He was clearly well-prepared. So anybody who wants to know a little bit more about assessment, I would recommend them finding that on KGNU and finding a closet to clean out and listening away.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just say I had a terrific opportunity on Saturday to judge Middle School History Day at Southern Hills with school, children from schools across the district and from private schools as well. And I was so amazed and pleased and proud of the work that students are doing. I learned a lot about Clara Barton and Henry Ford and Gloria Steinem and a bunch of other issues, but the students had done a terrific job. They obviously put a lot of time into the work they'd done and were very professional in their presentations and in answering questions. And so it was just, it was a very well-run event. And I hope the kids, the young students and young historians got as much out of it as I did, because I thought it was just terrific and would look forward to doing it again. The next item on our agenda is information item. And our first item under the information item will be a legislative update of how things are going with the 2015 session. We've got a lot of issues that we're concerned about and interested in following. And I'm sure the community is interested in with regard to education. So Bruce, can you give us an update?
I'd be glad to start the conversation. I know you all have been following different issues and some of the same that I've been tracking. So last Friday morning, as co-chair of the CASE Legislative Committee, we invited Senator Hill and Representative Hamner to join the Denver Area Superintendent's for a conversation primarily on school funding. At the last minute, Representative Hamner had a conflict, but Senator Hill joined us. And so we had about an hour-long conversation about, you know, at least where he believes that this may go over time. And I think that what was reassuring was his commitment to making, keeping and maintaining education funding as a high priority for the state of Colorado. Now, how we get there and how we manage that over time, there may be some difference between the parties. But clearly, it was reassuring to hear him visit about that. I think there, you know, the work of the Joint Budget Committee today was that they would maintain the negative factor at the same level, which means that not buying it down at this point, but that's, as noted from a text I received from our lobbyist, is that's, you know, a starting point. So that's where we begin, which is really Amendment 23 in the governor's proposal. So I think on the funding piece, the work going forward for all of us, including the state superintendents, which I work closely with, and the Colorado Association of School executives, is that to secure the additional money the governor proposed, the $200 million. And our commitment will be to try to get as much of that as reoccurring. So some of the conversation that's going on is maybe a lesser amount that's reoccurring than the full amount. I think that the anxiety I've heard from multiple legislative sources is not so much for next fiscal year, but the year that follows, because of the Tabor cap and the other pressures that are being felt in the State General Fund in addition to public education with Medicaid and other transportation, other large investments the state makes. So that's, so early on still, we're early in the session on school funding. I think, you know, we're waiting for the update on where we are with the state's economy, which will occur next week. And so that's kind of a placeholder for this discussion. If it's good news, that'll be good news for us to maintain that confidence of making the investment in public education. So that's school funding. We'll continue to work on that. One of the things I helped organize following the Denver Area Superintendent's meeting is a commitment for all of the school districts who, and even some who didn't, who signed the superintendent's coalition letter that we delivered, we had 174 districts, that signed this request for funding. We brought together the district lobbyists for all of those districts. And so we had a meeting late morning on Friday with the district lobbyists, along with the superintendents, and really to talk about how that unified voice can be heard in this session, primarily on school funding, but there'll be some other issues as well. So it really allows us to leverage the investment we're already making as a school district and our lobbyists and other districts the same. They work closely together all the time, anyway. So this is really just, one of the concerns I had last session was that maybe we weren't consistent in our messaging to the lobbyists, all of our districts, including the superintendent. So we're trying to get better at that. So that was a really good meeting, and we'll do a lot of it by email from here on, but some face-to-face time as well. So the other major issue, so I'll switch off of school funding to student assessment. We have been an active voice around student assessment all year. And our students in the fall, and many parents since, and many of you as well. So that's a door we're knocking on, trying to encourage our legislators and governor to consider a different approach to student assessment, one that's more balanced, still provides appropriate levels of accountability. I mean, I don't think anybody's positioning as an anti-testing position, but rather an appropriate balance of state accountability and local assessments that help inform teaching and learning. So I shared with many of you and a bill draft. It's a pretty aggressive, aggressive stand on this that would reduce the overall level of assessment for students and would allow school districts to substitute local assessments in place of those assessments. So it really addressed three broad areas: the state accountability system and assessment, the educator effectiveness and how that student data, performance data would be used. So Senate Bill 191 addressed that issue. And also work around the READ Act, because of kind of the burdensome nature of the assessment of the READ Act. So not suggesting you have time to read the 54-page bill, but we'll continue to give you updates on that. I believe it's a starting point. I, you know, I think there, I just got a text that Senator Hill's getting ready to introduce another one. So we know there are quite a few in the queue. I mean, I guess our hope is that through our efforts and our lobbyists and parents and others, that we'll get this down, distill it down, to a good piece of legislation that will at least help advance this, this work going forward. And, you know, time will tell if we can make all the progress we want to make or if we're just get partway down the path on that. So the student, the student assessment is a big area as we go forward. The other is the Student Data Privacy Act, which, you know, Senate Bill 173, I think, is the number. Andrew Moore, our Chief Information Officer, Melissa Barber, we've been very involved in the state-level discussion of this. Andrew has done, made several trips to Denver to meet with lobbyists and bill drafts, staff and legislators. So we think what was introduced last week is a good place to start. It was amended at kind of the final hour or part of the session, but we do think it's a good place to begin. And so we'll continue to monitor that really closely and, you know, hopefully have some progress on that. I just switch briefly to the federal level. A month ago, I was involved in a conference call with Juliana Herman, who's in Senator Bennett's office. We've had some conversation with Representative Poll, Congressman Pollis's office, around the reauthorization of the ESEA. Dr. Pilch and I spent about 45 minutes on the phone late afternoon with Juliana Herman, trying to understand from her perspective and Senator Bennett's perspective where they see this reauthorization of the ESEA going as we go forward, because it's very much, you know, in discussion right now at the federal level, which is good. And so we weighed in on some things that we think should be incorporated in federal legislation, but probably weighed in more on things we shouldn't, that shouldn't be in federal legislation. So, you know, we've assured them that we want an active voice in this. And hopefully, you know, Senator Bennett's very committed to this work, that we can have some impact. So I did invite the senator, through his staff, to, the next time he's in our community. We'd love to show him around and engage him in a more in-depth conversation about some of the things we think we've figured out at BVSD and some things we'd like to work on. So we think that was a productive conversation this afternoon. So I'll stop there. We're going to be glad to comment and further on any of those or any of the bill drafts. And I know you've all been tracking these as well. And I know Briggs stands ready to share with our questions as well. So, thank you.
Jenny?
Thank you.
So I'm going to use this time, instead of board comment time, to also report briefly to the board that I was able to attend the Casby Winter Legislative Conference, which took place, as you recall, the day after the snowstorm or during the snowstorm. I get brownie points for making it down there anyway, I think. And so, and I can say that I've noticed, I mean, we're tracking some of the same things, or Casby was talking about some of the same things you just talked about. I'm kind of curious, when you had your meeting with the lobbyists, was Jane Urschel there?
So these, we did not invite the association lobbyists this meeting because we really wanted to be CASE, which is our organization, plus the district lobbyists. But clearly, a commitment to continue our close relationship with Casby and CEA, because we had good unity with those associations last session and planned to do the same. But they were not.
And because they can do some effective lobbying.
Yeah, yeah, we're working hand and glove with them.
I have boundless admiration for Jane Urschel's ability to weigh in on these things. And I will say, I also noticed that, so the Legislative Conference was very good this time. And one of the things I did notice was that Owen Hill also came and talked to us. He's the, for those people out there who may not know who he is, he's the Republican Chair of the Senate Education Committee. And so I think it's interesting that he's the legislator that came and asked to talk to us about how to get more funding for public education. I don't know where our Democrats are on that, but that's who we heard from. And so, and he had some ideas about how that would happen in the future going forward. And one of the things he said was that we need to change the culture down at the state legislature, which is something we can all be working on, so that the school finance bill gets introduced in January and not in March, because by March, the money's all spent, essentially, is what he said. So that's something for us to be thinking about, not this year, but next year, because it actually makes a lot of intuitive sense. And as soon as he said that, I thought, oh, of course, that's right. We should be having, school finance should be leading the funding battle, not picking up the leftovers. So, and then I will also say that I also attended a session, because those of you who listen to me know that I've been very concerned about the state graduation guidelines requirements. And that work is going forward, and it looks to me like some good work is being done around the menu of options that the state is going to set as minimum, set as a minimum graduation requirement that districts will have to comply with. And it looks like that that's going to be less restrictive going forward. And I had an opportunity to talk to the CDE person, Esp.
Elliot Esp.
Elliot Esp, thank you, very good. Very good. I don't know why I can't remember his name, except, but anyway. And because one of my concerns has been that we not make it impossible for somebody who's completed four years of high school to graduate because they can't pass a test. And they've lowered the bars on some of those tests, but he also indicated to me that the work is going to continue to go forward to find other ways for students to demonstrate competency. I personally think that passing a high school class ought to be a demonstration of competency, but that's just me, silly me. So anyway, those were some of the things I had, I noticed. And, oh, and then I'm going to comment, because I happened to hear with regard to No Child Left Behind, that the federal government has now given New Hampshire a waiver. I just heard it on the way out the door, so I didn't hear the whole thing.
That's great.
To do some tests, to administer tests in the way that Lori Shepherd has been talking about, and actually, our, you know, own some other people in our district with sort of sampling. And I'm hopeful that maybe such a thing might be available to Colorado. There's no reason, we've been the leader in other areas of education reform. It seems to me like that might be something. I don't know how we'd go about pushing for that, but...
It's been tracked really closely, what permissions they were given, yeah.
So thank you for your work, Bruce. And I will say, the other thing I will say is it's been really quiet so far. I mean, I noticed that the Casby Legislative Resolutions Committee met last week by telephone, and they managed not to take a position on anything. I mean, and so everybody just seems to be kind of waiting to see what shakes out in terms of which assessment bills survive, survive to be lobbied on and other stuff. We're just kind of letting, I mean, nothing's making it through, or very few things seem to be making it through both the Democratic House and the Republican Senate in any case. So it's been really a quiet, from a lobbying point of view, quiet year.
Sure. Shelly?
Bruce, any guesses as to what that $19 or $20 million that we were sort of factoring in might become after these adjustments they're making? You said it probably will drop.
So on the, sorry, on which part?
Our share of the budget increase.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, so, so just to remind you, of the additional $200 million that was in the governor's budget beyond Amendment 23, our share of that is $7 million. So, you know, just if, if it's half that, then obviously we'd be, our benefit would be $3.5 million. So we had calculated, first draft of our preliminary budget was a growth of about $19 million that includes the $7 million. So I think, you know, depending on if they don't realize that, it would be, you know, whatever number of million to come off the 19. So, but, you know, I would say that we'd really speculative to estimate what that would be now, but that's, that's the kind of thumb calculation we've done is that our share of the $200 million is about $7 million.
So you're thinking maybe 16 total instead of the?
Yeah, I mean, it would be pretty early, but yeah, I mean, if it were half, it would be obviously $16 million, so.
Okay, one other question. When you talked with Senator Bennett, did you talk about the issue of public dollars funding private schools through the ESEA?
We did not speak about that specifically today. We've had that conversation before and also just the flexibility locally for dollars that do come for districts to how to use those. And then obviously we talked significantly about the accountability piece, but I mean, that's an area that we need to continue to monitor is the allowance of public dollars to be used for private education, absolutely.
I think that's the worst possible outcome of ESEA.
Yeah.
I think that we need to keep that.
There's a political force in there right now on that, absolutely.
That's it. Okay, thanks. Anyone else? No? Okay. All right, well, keep working hard.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
You know, it always feels like it's a long slog while we're waiting for May as we, you know, try to ensure that there's funding for public schools, not just ours, but for all kids. And I think it's really important for all of us to take, speak up when we can about all the issues that affect us most noticeably right now for us, I think it's the testing and the funding questions. But, you know, let's, let's hope that they are listening to the public. Thank you. The next information item is Casey Middle School. And I think in our last meeting, there were some suggestions that we would like a follow-up of what have we done and what are the next steps that we should be considering. We heard some comments tonight and, so Bruce, would you like to?
Okay.
Tell us where you are.
So I'll do a quick recap of an update that I emailed to you last evening and we emailed to the Casey School community today and I also forwarded it to the media today. So there, one of the things we wanted to do is that, what we've discovered is that folks tune into this discussion at different times, so they might not know what conversations have occurred before. So we, in this communicate, we really tried to take a look back as well as going forward. And so one of the things I just would say is that the two areas that we're focusing on right now are around the ventilation for the internal piping of the septic system within the building. Some of the pressure that's in the system that was commented on this evening, which our consultants identified on two occasions, is we don't believe it's contributing any hydrogen sulfide into the building now because the breach in the pipes that we had trouble with before, that we discovered through the smoke test, have been resolved. We will readminister a smoke test over spring break, just to double-check that. But the pressure in the system is not appropriate. And so what they did on that almost snowy Saturday morning and afternoon was we had installed vent filters on the top of the 40-some vent pipes on the roof of the building. We'd installed filters on that, carbon filters, we talked some about that last time, to capture the gas so that it wouldn't make its way over the edge of the building and through the operable windows or into the fresh air returns. So that has worked. We believe that has been successful. The challenge is, is it doesn't let the building breathe as it should and so, which creates some pressurization within the system itself. So they pulled all of those filter caps off on that day and retested the system and it worked as would be expected. So then they put them all back on because we, you know, we still need that solution until we have a longer-term solution. So the engineering or the design work that's going on right now is to do extended vent pipes to get them further off the elevation of the roof so that we don't have to have filters or caps on them and to try to, don't have to use the carbon filters so that it will breathe into the atmosphere, which is what it should do, just like it does in your homes. And so, but in the interim, we will maintain our present filtration on those vent pipes. So obviously, we want to make it look appropriate and we want to design it in the building and it's also an area that it has to withstand, I think, 110 mile-an-hour winds. And so, you know, we need to design it right. And so we'll work with private contractors to design and install that. So that's in progress and we're hopeful. It probably depends on work schedules and things that that work would be completed yet this spring, hopefully very soon, within the next month. The other area that we have, was recommended by Dr. Richard Shaughnessy and Brad Turk is that we would rebalance the entire air handling system in the building. I think Tom referenced in his comments from his visit last week, some maybe not the right level of circulation of air within the building. We would concur with that. We think that some of what has made it more difficult for us to get to where we want to be is not only the leaks that we had of hydrogen sulfide, which we believe we've remedied that now, but really getting good air circulation through the building. And so when companies come in and do that, it was done originally in this building. We're not sure it was done adequately originally. We are following up on that. But, you know, they come in and make sure that every vent, every damper, everything is adjusted appropriately. So it's kind of a big commissioning to do that, but we believe it needs to be done, as do our consultants. So again, we are in the process of contracting for that work to be done. If we can have it be executed in the evenings and weekends, it would be pretty disruptive to do it during the school day. But again, we believe that will be, you know, a major asset to finish that work up. So those two things in combination are what we are working on right now. As a part of their work that weekend, they brought their equipment on site, is that we, so we did the pressure test, as I've described. They also checked air quality throughout the building as they, you know, worked with the air handling system, turned all the ventilation on, the vents, the hood on the stove, the science rooms, to see how it affected pressures, opened windows, ran it again. So a lot of pressure testing and we believe that this rebalancing will get us to where we need with getting good fresh air return and distribution throughout the building as we go forward. The other thing I would just mention is that we've continued to have conversation on the health side of this, so those comments are all sort of getting the building to where we need it to be. And I just talked to Richard Shaughnessy last evening and who, you know, has been working with us on this. He's really very confident that these two things I just described will advance us down this path a long ways and get us to the place that we need to be with overall air quality in the building. We have been working with the Boulder County Health Department and the State Health Department. We've met with them. They've come to our planning meetings. There's, we put in this communicate today, which we have copies in the room here. Folks would like a copy. It's also posted on the Casey website, is that we listed all of the different standards that, areas that we are looking at as far as health is concerned. And so the different standards are listed on that material. All of our assessment has been below, even when we had hydrogen sulfide leaks in the building, when we air tested around that, we're below that standard. And so what the county and state health department said is there isn't any evidence that the levels of hydrogen sulfide in the building would cause, has never been high enough to cause long-term health effects for students or staff. So that's, we continue to have a conversation with them. One of the analysis that they did this, within the last month, I would say, is looking at periods of time that students or adults would be exposed. So is it an episode or is it overlong? So they pulled together some data over extended exposures. I mean, they looked at lifetime exposures and 24 hours a day lifetime. Well, obviously, it isn't lifetime in that building and it isn't 24 hours a day. But when you use those standards, it creates the need for a lower threshold because of the longer extended exposure. But even within that, they were satisfied, given the amount of time that any staff member or student would be in the building, even with that exposed time, we're still within the safety range. There was comment this evening, and we certainly have heard it before, around children versus adults. So these are not industrial standards we're using. These are for indoor air quality and not just in industrial sites. Now, the pediatric aspect of this is a bit more challenging because there has not been as much research done on that. But again, working with National Jewish Hospital, the State Health Department and the County Health Department, they are, I mean, these are their statements. They're still confident that the levels, because they are low enough, that they don't believe there's risk for students or staff in that environment. We've kept them informed on these building mitigation efforts we're still working on. Obviously, they're supportive of that going forward. One of the things I asked them to share with us is how much data they have for other schools in Colorado. What testing have health departments done and what levels do we have? And the answer is they don't have any. So this is not broad-based surveying that goes on as a part of a data set for us to do some comparative analysis. So we are reliant upon really the work that Dr. Shaughnessy has done because he has done work across the country around indoor air quality, not just for public schools, for other public buildings and other institutions. And so, again, he is confident based on the data we've collected and these standards that have been established by national organizations that we're within that healthy range. His recommendation, there's been some suggestion that we might do more monitoring of the air. He's confident, given our baseline data from Quest, which we've made public, and those are the levels I'm referring to as being under that standard or within acceptable range, and the testing they did that weekend, that what he recommends is to get these two major pieces done, the ventilation piping and the rebalancing of the system. And then at that point, put like an assessment schedule, I'll just say assessment, assessment schedule that would between, so let's just say optimistically, we get this done by early April, this work, that between that and the end of the year, we would run a set of air quality tests again and then see where we are come break into summer. And then he would, he will recommend to us an assessment schedule going forward. I mean, obviously, if we continue to have good air quality and no incidents and no bleeps in that, no spikes, then, you know, he probably will recommend less frequent over time, which would make sense. We have scheduled on April, this is in the bulletin we sent out to families today, we've scheduled a public forum on April 2nd, which is a Thursday. We have all the details together, but I think you can plan on early evening. But we'll work with Justin and the faculty there and the school community to find the right time. Dr. Shaughnessy will be there. Brad Turk, his associate from New Mexico, plans to be there. So they'll, they'll be there to kind of give an update. They'll have their full report done by then. They'll share information from that report. They'll talk about the recommendations they have made and those that we've been able to take care of and those that we might still be working on if we still are. And then we will also have representatives from the Public Health Division, either the county or the state or both. And also, we reached out to National Jewish Hospital to see if one of the doctors who we've been using as a consultant up till now would be willing to, you know, work it into their schedule to be present. So we'd have both the facility side of the discussion as well as the medical side. I will tell you that we have followed up with every staff member who has reported any symptoms, and we've done that for employees through the workman's compensation program. So the attending physician worked with workman's comp, has met with the staff members who have, they just sent paperwork to do that, but we've met with all of them. And those who have needed more than an initial visit, the doctor has accommodated that and we've monitored that really closely. Again, I think I've shared with you informally before, there isn't any evidence that the symptoms that the individuals are experiencing are a result of hydrogen sulfide. So they've gone through that assessment. Not clear what the irritant might be or if it's in Casey Middle School. So, I mean, that's ongoing diagnostic work that needs to be done. Every student that has been brought to our attention, we've reached back out to the family if they're, if they have attending physician or if they have any medical results that might help us do some analysis around this, we've asked for that. Some families have cooperated and some have not, but we've pursued each of those. Susan Rowley, who's our Director of Health Services, has personally worked with that. I sent Susan an email last night and to say, Susan Rowley, our Director of Health Services, and asked Susan to say, so do you have any recent comparative data with regard to health office visits to the school as compared to a peer school in the Boulder Valley School District? So from headaches to nausea to, you know, symptoms that we've heard about. So just, she just emailed that data to me. In every category, Casey was at or less than the peer school and overall was less than the peer school. So we understand there have been some symptoms that have been described to you and if families feel they're more severe, we've worked with families to find out what it is because it may or may not be related to Casey School, but regardless, we are concerned. I mean, these are our students, we're our staff, but just the overall, if you step back and just look at the data for a month's period of time, we're not seeing any, we're not actually seeing as much referral to the health office. And this would be a school that has similar size, similar demographics as Casey Middle School. So, I mean, we've been monitoring this for two years to see if we've had unusual incidence of symptoms or uncharacteristic. I mean, children get respiratory issues, children get the flu, just like adults do. So clearly, the health office is always busy and, but we, you know, we've tried to look at the data over time to see if there's any trends or any patterns that would cause this concern. And that's just one data set, but it's one that we've looked at. So maybe with that, Lori, I think I would conclude my remarks and I'd be glad to answer questions about any of these issues. I will say two other things, maybe. There have been questions about the soil and there have been questions about the heat exchange system at Casey. So when Dr. Shaughnessy and Brad Turk were on the campus, our team was with them. They checked air quality around the heat exchange pumps that come from the underground source, no elevated levels of any air toxins that we'd be concerned about. They drilled, one of the things that they described to me, I'm learning a lot about this, that sometimes cement parking lots or slabs can create kind of a cap. And so if you have a source underneath, it can kind of capture it and then it can make its way. So they drilled through the cement in the parking garage to see if the soil could be a source of hydrogen sulfide and negative readings on that. I mean, there was significant soil testing when the building was reconstructed, so we were confident that wasn't a problem. But they said, you know, we're going through all of the checklist. We're just checking them all off. And so we're going to run all the tests with regards to the mechanical system and potential sources. Again, we, there have been some questions about the kitchen as a potential source and the grease trap and the drain off of that. Again, through their testing, they're confident that the system's working appropriately. You know, we had trouble with the P-traps in the floor drains prior, but we believe, again, that has been resolved. So President, all right, that's a quick, I mean, you've received all that information and it's available also at your package tonight is a chronology, a multi-page chronology that's color-coded that you can reference at your leisure. It'll be a bit of a read, but if you have any questions on that, Don Orr and his team compiled that information and we'd be glad to answer those questions. So again, Lori, I'd be glad to answer any questions or add additional comment if there's a need for more information.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Board members, comments? Tina?
So thanks so much for providing such an in-depth response. It was really helpful. I also went on the tour on Friday and learned a lot more about Casey's ventilation than I ever wanted to know and spent way more time in the crawl space than I had ever hoped to spend. And this was, so it was really good and it was really clear to me that, that Don and Justin know what's going on in the school. They're looking at all the different aspects. I felt good about, you know, the knowledge base, even though, which, I said I felt good, I felt confident in them. I don't have any confidence in myself on any of these issues, so it's tricky for me to say, yeah, it's the right thing or it's the wrong thing. I have no idea. But it was a great tour and I just had, one of my biggest questions is, this has been a really, or my concerns is this was a really divisive issue in our community. And, and I'm also concerned about the health and I don't want to not talk about that, but can you speak a little bit about how you're addressing sort of healing the community and people who are now having lots of doubts about Casey, people who really didn't have any doubts six weeks ago? And I'm definitely in that category. I didn't really know that there was this issue. And what I think would be helpful, I mean, one is just putting out a lot of data and all that, but how can we make this feel that it's, I don't know how best to say this, but how we can really have trust and really have faith that this is going to be the right solution? Because there's just been so many different opinions and it often feels like a he said, she said kind of issue and I smelt the gas, well, I didn't, so it's safe, but I smelt it, so it's not safe. I mean, it's not, and a lot of this data monitoring doesn't seem to be really convincing anyone either way. And I'm just, I'm one- And I'm just wondering what kind of work we can do in that respect. And my other question will be about the irritant. What kind of, if there is an irritant, what's sort of the timeline for trying to figure out what the different irritant is? And also, and what the process will be for them?
So on the first point, Tina, that you ask about, I mean, one of the things that we've been advised, and we're taking that advice, is to, to sort of reset our communication strategy. And so we've done that, the document that I shared with you last night that was distributed to the community. You know, a couple of things have occurred, understandably, is that if you go to the website, we have 54 documents on there, and some of them are very long and very detailed. So even if you were really ambitious and had time to wade through that, would be, and where do you start? And if you don't have history? So, so some of what we tried to do in this communicate is sort of reset the communication to say, all those documents are still there. Folks want to read two weeks' worth of air quality data from four stations in the building and parts per billion, it's all there. But, you know, the reality is, most people, that isn't what they want to do, and it isn't, doesn't really make sense even if they do. So what we're trying to do is get, do a reset on that and get consistent communication, and to acknowledge the expertise that we're using, including our public health officials, and including, I think, a nationally-recognized hospital, and also two nationally-recognized consultants around air quality and mechanical systems, in combination with our technical staff and other contractors we're using locally, including Quest and others. So really trying to make it really clear what we know, what we're doing, and where we're going. So that there's a fair amount of misinformation that's been communicated in the community. Some of it is fear-based, and the motivation, I don't fully understand. But the point is that people hear that, and they don't have anything to balance it with, you can get there. I understand that. And so we're just going to try to give factual information, and obviously, any health-related issues that children or staff are experiencing that may or may not be related to Casey Middle School, we can't share that information. Obviously, that's private information. But what we can commit to is that we'll work with public health officials, we'll work with medical professionals, and we'll pursue every case brought to our attention. So, I mean, that's to try to give reassurance. And we're confident that after folks understand the efforts have been made, and the issues that contributed to the hydrogen sulfide initially have been addressed, and the system is rebalanced, you know, we just have to build confidence over time. So we think clear, concise communication that's accessible. One of the things that I've heard is they'd like to hear more from Justin, our principal. So we're going to work with, you know, to help support him. And he's busy running a 600-student building. He's got lots on his plate every day. This is one more thing on his plate. He's doing a great job with it. So we're going to give him some support, so that, you know, folks want to hear from him. The other really significant event, I do think, is this meeting on April 2nd. I mean, so if folks are willing to listen, and if folks are willing to understand what's going on, I mean, if they have an open mind to scientific evidence and information presented from those who have expertise in the field, which is who we need to rely on, I mean, they have expertise well beyond what we have, that we need to bring them forward to the community. Any reporting they do will be made public, and it'll be open to the public, you know, parents, staff, board members. Everyone will be welcome, and, and we'll take the time. If there's a need for a follow-up meeting, we'll make arrangements for that as well. One of the things I talked to Dr. Shaughnessy about additional tests, he just said, you know, I think we should do these two strategies we're talking about, that we should run air quality tests after that, we should continue to monitor the symptoms. I mean, some of what we're looking at is this reported symptoms. It's not an exaggerated or elevated level. So it's easy that if you are told that something may be contributing to your nausea or your headache, and you would have had it anyway, it's easy to associate it with it, you know? I get that. And so part of what we need to do is continue to monitor, is there any more incidence of illness or concern in this building with children and staff than we see in every other building that we work in? And right now, we're not seeing that. And so, but, you know, we just need to continue to respond to those questions. And to be available to staff, Don Orr, Justin McMillan, principal, and I went over and met with the faculty for an hour and a half, a week ago, a week ago Thursday, I guess it was, after school. We had forty-some faculty that gathered around. We did a listening circle. They, you know, shared their comments with me and the others that were with me, and we were able to visit with them. I think it was a constructive environment. To Catherine's comments earlier, when she gave comment, I mean, that is the kind of environment we have, where we're open and we listen to each other, and we'll follow up when it's helpful. So I think we just have to rebuild the trust for those who have lost trust, Tina. I think we need to do that. At this point, Dr. Shaughnessy's not recommending additional tests beyond those that we've done until we get these two other remedies taken care of. If the air quality tests are a problem when we do that, or there's increased levels of illness or symptoms, then obviously, we need to, you know, go further with that. But at this point, his recommendation is that we exhaust these strategies first and see where we are.
So one question I would have is, just on the monitoring, I've heard consistently through email and through public comment that there doesn't seem to be consensus in the trust of the monitoring process. So it seems like that is a standalone element. There seems to be a lot of questions about, is it, was it the right equipment, or are they reading the data correctly? Would you consider, just for the monitoring piece, after the two improvements have been completed, getting some kind of group that might include a couple of teachers, a couple community members, perhaps a board member, to just be a part of the monitoring process? And it might literally just be one-hour meeting that talks about what you're going to do?
Sure.
And what it's going to look like?
Sure.
And then at the end, they would maybe get to see the equipment and just sort of see the numbers?
Sure.
And maybe doing something so they can just kind of bring that link together.
I mean, I think the firm that we're using for this enjoys a very good reputation of being, you know, using the right equipment. And I will tell you that Dr. Shaughnessy and Brad Turk, when they looked at the test results and analyzed it, they're confident they're looking at data and collected in the right places, the right times, the right, the episode, over time. But I think if, you know, I guess we could get yet another firm to confirm the data of Quest, if we wanted to do that. But I think if what you're saying more is not the individuals we're using to do the testing, but maybe a deeper understanding of the nature of the testing and do some briefing on it, I mean, these are fairly technical reports, but if folks were interested, there wouldn't be any reason that they, you know, that couldn't be explained and answer questions about that. I mean, that's what our staff does, but we could certainly include others if that'd be helpful.
I think it might be. I'm not sure.
Sure.
I mean, it's something we can discuss, but maybe just to get a.
We, I mean, I'm sure that Quest would be glad to do that.
And then, and that would just be when the monitoring goes in after the two improvements?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not going into history and.
Right.
Questioning data.
Because it really matters going forward.
This is moving forward now.
Yeah. If that would be, help restore confidence, absolutely. We could, we could figure out a plan to do that.
Does that seem like it would make sense to get more, more community participation just for the monitoring piece?
Thanks, Tina.
Jim?
Yes, and I would agree that some of this is a trust and confidence issue. One of the things I heard tonight was specifically monitoring for benzene and styrene. I know how difficult to separate those two chemicals are. I know we've, or the district has monitored for the volatile organic compounds. Do we have any plans to monitor going forward for anything other than the H2S? Would we still monitor the VOCs or perhaps even, you know, spring for a mold test to see? Just to close that question, if we can, and if we can't, then we know some, some more work we need to do? Would that be something the district would consider?
Certainly, we can, we can consider anything. The, I have had conversations with Dr. Shaughnessy about going down the path of doing the VOC, additional VOC test, because you're right, there has been some, it's been done. It's a whole nother level of assessment that is fairly sophisticated and cannot be done locally. So, you know, I think what his recommendation, the other evening, when I talked to him, he said, let's get through this first, let's see where we are. I think we do mold tests all the time, so I can just answer that question. We've done that. We do that on all of our school sites regularly. We can go back and I can work with Don to see when it was most recently done. We're pretty confident that's not a contributing factor at Casey Middle School based on our tests. But I think the more sophisticated analysis around the volatile organic compounds is something we certainly should keep on deck. You know, Dr. Shaughnessy said, you know, it's fairly sophisticated and fairly complicated. I mean, obviously, if we're looking for a particular element or compound, that's one thing. If we're simply looking for any, there are thousands. And so I think he absolutely, he's done this work. He's willing to work with us on that. His preference is to work through these steps first, given the kinds of symptoms we're dealing with, that, you know, he thinks we should run this course first and then see where we are, you know, later this spring. And it's certainly something we could do. He recommended a lab out of Berkeley that would be, who we would work with if we go there. So, but yeah, we have, we've explored that, and it's, I would just say, it's on the shelf to consider if we feel like we get to the point that we need it. Or if we clearly have a medical diagnosis from anyone that spends time in that building that would indicate that those are clearly contributing factors, well, that helps, or any other element, that helps us get down that path a lot further. I mean, that's generally, when we get involved in these discussions with students or staff, it's because they've been diagnosed of being, that element is an irritant, or they're sensitive to that, then we can test for it. But, I mean, there are truly a lot of different elements that could be contributing in any environment. And, and it may not be the school environment that's causing the irritant, as we know.
Okay, Bruce, I just want to go through what, what you said, kind of in order.
Okay.
Even though I have some random questions in addition to that. You said that you've gone through the internal piping in the building, and that you think you've satisfied all the breaches that you found, that you fixed those, and that you're going to be doing more smoke testing, right? You did find out that the pressure was not appropriate in the sewer pipes, right?
The, there is an elevated level, I mean, there really should be just a natural flow. So there's some pressure within the internal pipes right now, yes, from the pressure testing.
Okay. So, and then you talked about the carbon filters and how there might be part of the problem, not letting the pressure out. So when we visited the school, are, are those filters, those clear caps that are on top, or are they inside the pipe and the caps on top of that?
Right. They'd be inside the pipe. It's where the, we, actually, we'd run initially a carbon filter in the fall that, unfortunately, what happened was that when there was condensation in the, you know, making our way into winter, then those particles froze, so that it became not only not an effective filter, but also almost became a block. So those have since been replaced with another element that works better in this climate. But again, our consultants are just saying, you know, that's okay, but that's not the right long-term solution. So, so yes, those filter units are in there and are operative, but again, their advice is just getting them elevated so that the building can breathe. And just, I mean, part of it's the building design, part of it's the topography, and part of it is what goes on when you build a building next to the, you know, the front range of the mountain. So, because of what can happen with wind drafts. We've run smoke tests, a great video of running smoke through those vent pipes and watching it drift and go over the edge of the building and come back in towards. And we have operable windows. So, again, we just think rather than running a risk that it, that they could ever be a contributing source, because windows are going to get opened and, and the wind's going to do what it does. So we just want it, this will be designed in a way that on any given day, on any given time, they would be elevated enough that it shouldn't be a problem. Yes, we still have those filtering elements in the pipes.
So when you took those off, you said it went back to normal?
Right.
Right? So, but you put them back on because you felt like you'd still have this wafting problem?
Correct.
If you did not put them on?
Correct. Just to buy some time.
Right. So, it's not clear to me that we're not creating a worse problem by leaving them on than risking a wafting problem, especially in the winter when windows are most likely closed, for the most part.
Yeah, we talked to Dr. Shaughnessy. He really thinks this is where we should be right now, because he doesn't think there's any contributing factor with those filters there. And he doesn't think the slight pressure that's in the system is going to be, it isn't a good long-term plan, because you could wind up with another breach in a pipe, and if it's pressurized, it's only going to make it worse. I mean, these are mechanical systems. So, you know, his recommendation is, this will buy us some time until we get the design done. And, and the other is, I mean, there's fresh air returns, too. It's not just the operable windows. There's some evidence that maybe on given wind conditions, when we didn't have them filtered at all, that some of the gas was able to make it down to the fresh air, even though it's way to the, down the second floor of the building. There's some evidence that it may have made its way in. So I think it's just, you know, keeping a Band-Aid on it until we get there right long-term. He's not overly concerned about the pressure in the system, given where we are now. There is no evidence that there's hydrogen sulfide making its way into the building now. So we could live with what we have. We don't think we should. We think we should get this longer-term remedy.
Okay. Well, you know, there's a whole other theory out there, that since the building is negative pressure now, and the pipes are positive pressure, that the building's sucking in the sewer gas?
Right.
That that's just what happens.
Right. So they checked for that. That's exactly what they spent all day Saturday working on.
And that's what they found, I assume?
They checked the pressure, when it was pressurized, and then they took it off to make sure this was a good solution, and then they put them back on. So that's, that's exactly what they spent all day Friday and Saturday working on, and with their equipment to check for that, to make sure that, you know, that they were confident that it wasn't contributing back into the building. But again, it's not a system we want to leave there long-term. And because we have no elevated levels of hydrogen sulfide in the building either, I mean, if we had elevated levels of hydrogen sulfide in the building, and that was a potential source, then absolutely, this, we wouldn't be recommending this. We'd take a more drastic measure. But the fact that they, what I shared earlier was that they ran air quality tests at the same time where they were running these pressure tests, to make sure that when the system was pressurized, that it wasn't contributing hydrogen sulfide into the building.
Okay. But I think, I think some people surfaced tonight, and, you know, Jim asked, could there be something else? So.
Well, I think once we take care of these two issues, the rebalancing and this pressurization, if, if we find hydrogen sulfide, then it could be something else. But I think, again, given the analysis our consultants have done, they're confident this is it. I mean, these are the in-depth conversations I had with them that Friday evening and also Saturday. Now, I mean, but first, I mean, they're just feeling they need to work through these two things first, or our contractors need to. And then they, like I said, they want to put an assessment schedule in place and make sure we don't have any elevated levels of hydrogen sulfide or any other element in the building. But they just feel like these are, these things need to be done first, to make sure the system is operating the way it was designed to operate.
Yeah, I don't, I don't argue those two things need to be done. I'm just wondering whether we should take the filters out and uncap those things right now, tomorrow?
We could, we could visit with Dr. Shaughnessy about that. I mean, they were both on the roof. They were running the tests, and I guess I'm going to trust their years of experience doing this and working on hundreds and hundreds of buildings, that they felt that this was a better option than taking them off. Because the reality is, this is a middle school with 600 children, and I can't guarantee a window won't get opened unless we screw them shut.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm sort of not, not sitting here as a school board member trying to second-guess Dr. Shaughnessy.
Yeah, I'm just reporting what they're.
However, I mean, I'm, I'm also talking to someone who's a, a building person, you know, actually, a couple of them. And, you know, I just think that maybe you should.
We can, we can do it with them.
Consider an opinion where taking those caps off now might be an option, because.
We can re-explore that with them.
If it really is causing the building to suck sewer gas in, because they're positive.
We actually don't think it is doing.
You don't think that's true?
No, we absolutely do not think.
Shaughnessy does not think that's true.
No, he does not think it's a source.
The sewer pipes being positively pressured is not a source of gas.
Today, right.
Okay. So, when you, when you go about building these longer vent pipes?
Yes.
You said that should be done within a month?
I think we're getting design work done right now, and I think it probably will mostly be availability of contractors to get it done. But that's, that's our goal, is to get it done with, you know, within a month.
So if you were to just take the caps off, take the filters out, rebalance the building, and it starts working properly, would there be any need to do that? Because my understanding is there are a lot of buildings that have exactly the same setup that we have that are working properly. So I'm not sure why, if, if everything was balanced properly, why we would need to do that.
Because we have evidence that when the filters weren't there, that with the smoke tests running, the smoke through the vent pipes and coming off the roof, we have video of it going down and going out next to the building. And that had nothing to do with the balancing of the air handling system. That had to do with the venting of the, the system that was the septic system. So there is a worry...
Because you knew at that point that the building was positively pressured? Or if it were negatively pressured, it would be doing that?
I'm just telling you, Shelley, what the people we employed to do this analysis are saying to us, that they believe, given the construction of the building and the multi-story effect of it, and the topography of the area, and the nature of what the winds do in that area, they are not confident with the short vent pipes on the roof of the building, they are not confident. They, I mean, what they want to do is guarantee as best they can that they've recommended a solution that will work long-term. And I think they feel they need to get greater separation from the top of the building and potential return into the building, be it operable windows or fresh air returns, a greater distance than what exists right now.
I understand that. But when that smoke was first coming down and you were noticing that, do you know how the, if the building was positively or negatively pressured at that time?
I think our assumption would be that the septic system was not pressured at that time, because there were no, I mean, they think the filters...
The building, not the sewer.
Two different systems, they're, they're separate systems. And so, you know, fresh air returns are going to suck air in the building. That's how the air gets in. So if you have any gas that makes its way over the edge of the building and gets down to an operable window or a fresh air return, it will go in the building. Now granted, if it's sucking air in the building, a negative pressure, it will do it more efficiently.
Right.
But their concern is that it's still close enough that it can make its way in the building. Again, we can ask them if they, you know, I think their worry is, we'd rebalance the building and not address this issue, we'd be back and we'd have reported hydrogen sulfide in the building again, and we'd be back in this boardroom dealing with the same thing. So we really want to get a long-term solution to this, that we can be confident that we've taken care of the P-traps, we've taken care of the breach pipes, and we've taken care of the ventilation of the septic system, and now we have a balanced system, let's keep going to school. That's what we're hoping for.
So with respect to the balancing that's going to be going on in the next few weeks, you said you're going to be doing that on night and nights and weekends?
Get the contractors in line to do that.
So is, is the goal then to get that done before spring break?
Within a month, probably through spring break, I would say, because that'll be a really good work time for us. We'll close, get a lot of work done during spring break.
Okay, I guess my next set of questions is around the, and stop me, Laurie, if somebody else wants to jump in on...
Well, let me just check.
Okay.
Just a sec.
Do you want a break? I have questions.
Sure. I mean, I don't need a break, but go ahead.
So after we do the rebalancing and do these longer vent pipes, Shaughnessy recommends we retest, what is the baseline we're comparing to? Like, when was the last test done that we're going to be comparing that to?
So we had some assessments done in January, I think it was the most recent, so what are we, in March now? So I think it was into late January that we ran a 10-day window of assessments in, and we have some from the fall as well. We actually have pretty good baseline data for the building itself on multiple different types of elements we've looked for in the air. So again, all below that standard of an acceptable range. I mean, I think, we'll compare it to that, obviously, but what we're most interested in, Dr. Shaughnessy's most interested in, is that we have a, a building that's shipping fresh air and ventilating appropriately, that's the rebalancing that we've got, this potential source completely taken care of, that be the roof vents, and that when we test the air quality again, that it's, you know, below that standard. So it may not be notably lower than it is now, but it may be. I mean, that's, you know, we're working towards as low a level as we can. I mean, there's hydrogen sulfide in our environment all the time. If we checked it in this room, there would be some. And so, you know, our, our interest is to make it as healthy and fresh as we can.
Could we?
And we think these two strategies will help with that.
I mean, why wouldn't we test again before doing the rebalancing and lengthening the vents? And when we say we're doing ongoing air quality monitoring, what is, what do we mean by ongoing? Like, is that every few months, or?
Well, I think what I mentioned earlier is that Dr. Shaughnessy will recommend an assessment schedule, you know, just how frequently he thinks it would be necessary. I mean, I think his belief is that if nothing has changed since the last time we did it, the filters are there, there have not been any breaches in the pipe, we've got the P-traps taken care of, we haven't balanced the system, we haven't done any, we haven't done the fixes, but we haven't created any new problems either. I mean, he just said, you can spend the money if you want, but he doesn't think you're going to find anything different. And it isn't inexpensive to run these tests. And so, I mean, certainly said, go ahead if you want to. He's just not believing, because nothing has changed since January, that we're going to find anything different than what we found before. But we certainly can, and if we do, we're going to do the very same things we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So it isn't going to change our course of action. I mean, we're going to do what we think needs to be done.
Right.
Because that's his recommendation, and we, we believe that's what needs to be done. So we certainly can, if we want to.
Would it just be another data set?
Yeah.
Maybe it would be the same, maybe it wouldn't.
They ran air quality tests the weekend they were in the building. That was one, and that was probably another part of his confidence, that he wasn't finding anything different in the air quality than the most recent tests and found them in a safe area. So that was a week ago, last Saturday, they were running those tests. They both drove to the site with their vehicles to bring their own equipment, because they wanted to use their own test equipment and their own pressure systems.
Did they use the same stuff the Quest was using, or?
I, you know, it's high-end stuff. I mean, these are people who do this for a living. And, you know, and their, their, their reputations and credibility is dependent on the quality of their work. And if, I've shared Dr. Shaughnessy's credentials with you, he's been doing this a long time and is nationally recognized for, and obviously, he's not going to make decisions or make recommendations that aren't consistent with his expertise. So, I mean, we are relying on the expertise of the people we've contracted to do the work.
Yeah. Back to you, Shelley.
Jenny, so how did you find Dr. Shaughnessy? How did you find these people?
Well, one way is you can go to the EPA website and say, who would you use? And he's recognized nationally for his work in public buildings as well as, you know, other buildings as well. I mean, he's an indoor quality expert. I mean, he's nationally recognized for his work out of the University of Tulsa. I mean, his work for us is through a, a company that he has, but his research is all around the University of Tulsa. So he's, I mean, he's at the top of the list of people you would contract with. And we've been really, his rate is very low. And, I mean, so he was at a son soccer game last night when I was talking to him, so, you know, I've got his cell phone number and he takes calls. And so the reality is, he's really, and Brad Turk is associate from New Mexico, you know, Richard Shaughnessy said, Brad, would you join me on this? I want to make sure, I've got another set of eyes on what I'm doing here, I want to make sure this is right. It's a bit complicated, because the topography and the nature of the building. And so they were both on site with that, and they, when I talked to him yesterday about the additional tests, they had already talked during the day. So they had been incredibly responsive, you know, for, I'm sure they've got multiple projects they're working on right now, but they've been very good with, and Mike Caskely and Don, I mean, we've all got a pretty open line of communication with them, and not going through someone that's pretty unfiltered, which we appreciate very much. Because obviously, we're working hard to get this resolved.
Thanks. You ready for?
I'm ready, yeah.
The health, maybe, or something? Go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on Sam's question about testing and also, you know, Tina's. I think, I think these two fixes that you're talking about make total sense based on what people have told me.
Right.
I think that's right to do, and totally support it. I think this question of testing, though, that Sam brought up is, is a good one, because there's multiple reasons for doing it despite Shaughnessy not thinking it needs to be done. And one of those is for the credibility of this entire process. I think that's probably the most important reason. And the second reason is because there might be something else in that building besides hydrogen sulfide. So you didn't say specifically what he was testing for while he was here. Was that hydrogen sulfide?
I think it was, it was a broad band of areas, but specifically, he was looking for hydrogen sulfide.
Yeah.
And carbon dioxide and carbon monoxide. I mean, those are the, tend to be the major elements that tend to affect buildings' health. But I, I just want to get clear, he's not recommending that we don't do it. He just doesn't think it's necessary that we do do it. Probably what does it matter to him, how we spend our money? So if we think we want to do that, we've got an estimate of what it would cost, and we can, we could sure have it done.
And...
So he's not recommending we don't do it.
When you say you have an estimate of the cost, do you mean you have an estimate of the cost, of what it would cost to do broad-spectrum continuous monitoring and multiple...
I have an estimate of what it would cost to have Quest come back in. We know, we know what their rate is. We've had them give an estimate if they did continuous monitoring till the end of the year.
Okay, but it would, they would necessarily broaden their spectrum?
So there's different tests they run. So when they did tests for carbon dioxide, it was a different set of tests they were running than when they were doing hydrogen sulfide. They've done both. So we could visit with them if they were doing a broader band simultaneously. I don't know that I have an exact estimate on that, but we certainly could consult with them. Yeah, I mean, we can do what we want to do. And if we need expertise beyond what this particular company can provide, we certainly can go there. Again, I think it's, I think what Dr. Shaughnessy's recommending is you've got good data, we're building off of that data, let's do our fix, and then let's retest it. But certainly in the interim, I mean, I just wouldn't want to be sensitive if we're rebalancing the system at the same time. We could have variability in the building just because we're going through a rebalancing.
Which I think would be helpful to see, actually, just the whole range.
We certainly could visit with Richard and see what his suggestions are.
See where we end up then after it's all done.
We're trying to keep the same consultant with us through this, so we don't add new variables when he's trying to do the data analysis. And so part of why he asked to do this report in April is he wasn't ready when we had our special meeting two weeks ago, when he wasn't available. But he wasn't ready, because he was, he wanted to come back and run these pressure tests he ran on that Friday, Saturday. You know, he wanted to check the, the heat exchange system, he wanted to, I mean, he wanted to check all these things off. So when he's, when he's here in April, he will have completed his report, probably published and make available to read ahead of time, but then he'll present off of that on April 2nd. So, I mean, I think he's just trying to collect a body of data. So if we run additional tests, we'll send the data to him, and he'll probably, if he can, incorporate in his report.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think he sounds great, and I, it's, but, you know, it's like, could be garbage in, garbage out, too, in the sense that if those tests are not consistent and testing for everything in the building over a long period of time, then he wouldn't know what's missing, right? He only knows...
So I asked him last night if he thought Quest was running the right set of tests for given what the problem we're trying to solve over, I mean, he's looked at all the data that we've ever gotten, that's all been sent in, we sent it to him last fall. I mean, he feels, but that doesn't mean we can't do more of it.
Okay.
It doesn't mean we can't do it more frequently. And he's not recommending not to, it's not like he's trying to hide anything. He's just saying, you know, it's up to you. But we certainly could go back and say, if we were to re-administer tests in the next two weeks while we're doing the rebalancing in the vent, what, what, what assessments would you recommend? We want to do it. And, you know, I'm sure he'd give us advice as to, he's very confident in this company we're using, he's very confident in the data they're generating, the, the areas we're sampling air from, he's good about that. He thinks we're, it's appropriately thorough, but certainly more data wouldn't be hurtful. We certainly could explore that with both the companies' availability to do that, as well as, you know, what areas, or what broadband of tests we might run.
Okay, I just want to follow up on your comment, too, about how the district's followed up with every teacher who has shared any symptoms. And, you know, I trust that that's completely true and that you've done what you need to do in that respect. My only fear is that you may not know about every teacher who's experiencing symptoms. And so for me, like, whoever suggested a while ago that there ought to be some sort of survey, you know, maybe an anonymous survey or something, of all those people, including parents and their students, that just seems to me like a really good idea right now. Because when I was in that library on Friday, and I think I told you this, a girl came up to me and said, I get nosebleeds all the time. And I said, did you tell your mom? And she said, no, I don't want to upset her. So what that led me to believe is that in all your, you know, well-meaningness to solve this problem, you may not have all the information you need to do that. So if people are experiencing symptoms, but they're not telling their moms, or they're not telling anyone else, that's not really helping us to try and figure out the problem. So we need to survey them somehow in a way that they will come forward and, and do that. So...
Let me just ask a question. Are you suggesting we survey the students?
Somehow, yeah.
Or the moms?
Well, the parent...
I mean, the moms don't know and the kids aren't telling? I mean, like, how do the moms know?
Well, I mean, well, this was one girl telling me this story, but if you did a survey of every parent in the building, and every parent knew that the survey was being done, they're much more likely to say their child, have they had any symptoms? You know, as opposed to not, not ever asking and the child not ever telling, you know, to get that conversation going, I think, would be helpful. And there's a lot of Latino parents in that school, so I, I'm afraid that they may be missing out on some of this conversation somehow. So to have a concerted survey that, in whatever way is possible, reaches out to people who aren't on the internet all the time and couldn't complete an online survey, I think would be really important. I just feel like a lot of people have recommended that, and I think that it's a good idea. Because we might identify symptoms that are not associated with hydrogen sulfide, but they're associated with something else, like Ms. Rubin mentioned. You know, I'm not sure what we will find, but if we don't do it, we won't find anything. So I, I, I don't know, that just seems like a logical thing to do. And then I had a question. You said that Shaughnessy did soil testing? Or we did soil testing?
No, Shaughnessy and Brad Turk, when they were on the campus that Friday, Saturday, on Saturday, actually, is when they did it.
Okay.
They drilled down and took, took soil samples and then tested the soil.
Okay. And do you know if we did that when we were building the school?
Yes, we absolutely did.
We did?
That was a question I had for Mike Caskely, the evening we met with Shaughnessy and Turk.
And there were no issues?
There were no issues, but, you know, and they heard that same conversation, because there was a lot of excavation on the site, and they said, great, we're going to do it anyway. We're going to check it off.
Great.
Yeah, so both.
And do you know also if we did, what's it called? The EPA's Phase One Assessment that they do, what's it called? Phase One Level Assessment, where they assess all of the grounds and the actual site before you build, to see if there's anything under the site or in the site?
What Mike Caskely, who's our Chief of Operations, assured me is that partly, part of the occupancy is there's a series of work, I mean, I can follow up and see what was done.
Yeah, could you find out?
I mean, there was significant excavation and soil sampling on the site, because obviously, you know the history there, there was, you know, quite a bit of earth moved and, but I can certainly follow up and see what soil samples and analysis was done in the original construction of the, or the rebuild of the building. Sure.
That would be good, because I read where that's required for new buildings, but not required for remodels. So it's not clear. I mean, we were almost a new building, but I don't know if we qualified as a remodel or a new building, so. Is that would be good to know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, let me check on that. All right, we'll just need to check and see. I mean, I think it was considered new construction, but let me see, we can check and see if that level of assessment was done, Shelley.
Okay. And then I just had a question about the working group that's going on.
Right.
Can you say more about who they are and what they're trying to do?
So the staff selected some teachers to represent the faculty, and Justin McMillan, the principal, worked with that. And then we reached out to see if there were parents who wanted to serve on that. And so my understanding, at the last meeting, there were some parents, a number of parents who came to the meeting, and, you know, they attempted to have a constructive conversation around, you know, what's going on. And so we'll see if this group has utility or not over time. You know, it may or not be necessary, but we feel like we've got open lines of communication if people feel like they are comfortable. Part of what I put in the communication today is how people should generate communication if they want to. So I think the purpose was, the reason, and I've shared this before, but the reason we created this group was to try to give folks a place to have voice and try to do it in a way that's, you know, constructive and orderly, so that it has value. And, I mean, it's not, it's not the boardroom, it's not intended to govern, it's not intended, they're not experts, no one there is an expert in air quality. And so, I mean, that, really, it's to share information, gather information, and, you know, and, I mean, some of what we just talked about tonight, I think, you know, that'd be appropriate to share that. I mean, it is in the communique, but it doesn't hurt to reinforce it. So I think it's really just to have a way to be heard and to hear from others. So I think it's really just to have a way to be heard and to hear from others. It's not a closed meeting, it's an open meeting, you know, and so that's where we are. I would say it's in its infancy. I don't think we have not normed the group yet. So, and, you know, we'll see if it has utility or not over time, it may or may not. And, you know, I think we're just trying to find ways to have people have voice.
Well, I really liked that the district set it up, and I appreciate you doing that. And, you know, I'd be really interested in hearing what people had to say in that group. So if you wouldn't mind, I would like to know when the next meeting is. I'd like to go sit in and just hear how things are going.
They've done some summary notes. I can check back with Justin, see what the status of those are.
Okay. There will be another meeting, right?
I think there is another meeting scheduled. I think they've committed to meet every two weeks or something, Shelley. I'm not quite sure. We've got spring break coming in, so that might not be quite the schedule.
Yeah, it would just be really interesting to see what their thoughts are as this process goes on, as you start making, putting in some of these fixes.
Right.
You know, how people are responding to that. I'd love to hear that it's going well. So I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Anyone else? Tom?
Yeah. Thanks for the update, Bruce. You know, at the, at the last special meeting here that we had on Casey, there were a number of recommendations made by various board members, including myself. I want to make sure I get the answers to all of them. One of them was this constant monitoring of air quality. And what I'm hearing now is that, that you're recommending through Dr. Shaughnessy that we don't do that. Is that correct?
Well, what I'm sharing, Tom, is he doesn't think it's necessary to do that. It costs us $65,000 to do that. I mean, you know, it's not his money. I think, you know, if we want to do it, we can do that. Quest gave us an estimate today to do that. I think he's just saying, "I don't think it's necessary. I think you've got a good data set, we tested the air when we were there, let's work on these solutions," and he's gonna recommend probably an intermittent assessment schedule, not a constant schedule. I think, because we don't think it's a volatile situation, and we don't think, because the source, we believe, is managed, we don't think there would be variability in the data. We, you know, because when we had breaches in the pipe, or P-trap issues, or this, the vents not working properly and making their way back in, then we could have episodes where we could see spikes. Again, we're pretty confident that the sources are taken care of. And now it's a matter of getting the air to, to your comments earlier, Tom, to get the better circulation of the air in the building. But, I mean, again, he's not recommending, and I'm not recommending we don't, I'm simply sharing with you what his thoughts were about the necessity or the value of it.
So that 65 Ks, that's for the remainder of the year?
Right, if we had Quest come in and continue to do their.
So if we were to do it for a period of time less than that?
Yeah, I think our windows have been much briefer than that, and like $10,000, $10,000 to $15,000. I mean, it depends on the duration and the, if we're running multiple tests, and the number of locations, the building. Each of these machines have to be recalibrated, and so the value of the validity is that, and that's the cost associated with it, because they actually, you know, take the filter and go and take it to a lab to have it checked. So, but yeah, I mean, that's what increases the cost, is just the amount of, because they actually physically come in and remove it, recalibrate it, so we don't do that, they do that.
Sure.
So, yeah, so the smaller window, the less cost, for sure.
Another one that was made was securing the services of a pediatric toxicologist or just a toxicologist. What is going on there? Have we done anything? Are we considering?
We have, we have done quite a bit with that, Tom. We, so, as I mentioned before, working with the folks with the County Health Department, as well as the State Health Department. We've reached back out to National Jewish Hospital. Dr. Pacheco has been involved, so she has some history with this and some understanding. This is not, pediatrics is not her area of expertise. I mean, she certainly understands this work and the work we're doing in air quality. We've asked her to reach out to her colleagues at National Jewish or beyond Colorado. So I'd just say we're in process with that. Our hope would be by April 2nd, when we give the report to the community, Tom, that we have at least as good information as we can have. I mean, the reality is, there isn't a lot of work in this area with children, so, I mean, we'll grasp what expertise is available or what reports are available. But Susan Rowley's been taking lead with that and reaching out to the medical community along with the County and State Health Department. So I would say we're in process of securing, I mean, what our interest is probably is to have them review the data, and based on their knowledge, you know, is there any area of concern? Again, what we've been informed, there isn't any evidence that it should be a concern for children based on the knowledge base within the medical profession. But we're still asking the question.
So are we asking for their guidance and suggestions on how to go about some of this stuff?
I think what we're trying to determine is if there anything in the air, from the air quality tests we've done, that would cause concern about any lasting impact on the health of adults or children. So, I mean, because we've got a pretty rich data set of the air quality, and we are probably gonna add to it now. So we're asking them to look at the air quality data assessments we have, determine if there's anything in there that would cause them to be concerned, based on what they know about national standards and their own research. Or, I suppose, cases. Now, I think we have to keep in mind always that there is gonna be a variability in a population. So, you know, air quality standards or anything else is based on most people, most of the time. And so it's certainly possible at Casey Middle School or anywhere else in our 31,000 students that we have adults and children that might have high sensitivity and are going to react to a level of an irritant or anywhere that triggers that for them. And so that's why the medical diagnosis for the individual cases is so important to us. I mean, we have children, not in Casey, that are extremely sensitive to environmental, and we work, Chris Wilderman and our team, I mean, we work on cleaning solutions, we work on floor coverings. I mean, we're talking about, you know, a few children in the whole system. But, I mean, obviously, we want them in school, so rather than trying to eliminate any possibilities or knowing what all possibilities are, I mean, we continue to get that down to what's an acceptable standard. That's what we're working on, and we think we're there, and now we just need to get the building to breathe right. But if we have individual cases, I mean, our interest is to keep them in whatever building they're in, that building or any other. And so, I mean, that isn't always possible. I mean, you kind of know extreme cases, you've read about those. But for the most part, we've been pretty successful, once we work with their M.D., to determine what triggers that sensitivity for that child or that adult. We've been pretty successful over time doing that. But really, that's where, knowing the individual diagnosis for the individual is really helpful to those. And that's the reason we've went down, each of these cases have been brought to our attention to say, is the medical professional working with that child or that family or that adult have information that would be helpful to us in that, trying to figure out, is there anything in this building that could be contributing to it? And if so, what might it be? And then we can do a deeper test for that. And that's really the more effective way to find a potential source. Again, whether it's in our building or their home or their yard or whatever. But, so, I mean, so yes, looking at the general data, Tom, is where we are starting. But if we have cases, I mean, because probably if we get there, if we have a doctor who's diagnosed a situation, and they believe there's a contributing factor, and the family's willing to share that with us, and if it's possibly at that building or any other building. I mean, the cases we're dealing with, where we know that's the case, not at Casey and other buildings, we are working with the medical professional, working with the family, that they've diagnosed what they believe contributing factors might be, and then we are checking to see if that, if we're, if there's anything in that building contributing that might be causing. I mean, that's really where we get way down the path with this. So we'll continue to do that, and I mean, I mean, it's certainly possible we have that going on at Casey, we have a few cases in the whole district. But, I mean, there wouldn't be any reason randomly it couldn't be there as well. And I'm not suggesting that's any of the cases we're dealing with, but I mean, I think we just leave that possibility open.
All right. Let me ask a couple more questions, and I'll share some of the things and information I picked up. Also, the suggestion was made, hiring, you know, expertise for the, in the geothermal area to evaluate the system, to make sure that there aren't other effects caused by, you know, inadvertently, obviously, that could result in some issues. And you mentioned that we have done some air testing there. But other than that, have we considered securing services or someone like that?
So I guess our thought, Tom, in working with Dr. Shaughnessy, is that for it to be anything that gets in the building, it has to come from the ground source. In other words, if there's something going on in one of the wells that are out under the field, which we don't believe there is, because it's a closed system and the closed system is working, and so we don't believe there is. But eventually, if it's gonna make its way into the building to contribute to the environment, then it has to come in the building. And so some of what you saw on Friday were the potential areas where that could, where there's an interface between the pumps that circulate the fluid into the ground source. I mean, so that would be the logical place, that it would make its way in the building. If it's escaping into the atmosphere, then it's probably escaping the atmosphere. So I think that's, so we did consult. I shared the questions that came up, I've shared some of the information that's been shared with the board, I forwarded that to Shaughnessy. So that was on their list to check. I mean, I, again, I think that, I mean, they didn't believe that would be possible. I think the bigger issue probably isn't the ground source around the heat exchange, it would be the soil again. I think that's, and so they both checked into the parking lot, like I mentioned, but I also think they were looking at, so what's a potential entrance place within the building, from septic lines to ground source heat. So, again, I, we certainly could consult with him and others to see if there's another potential way it could be contributing, and if so, how would we check that? I mean, I think we kind of went down that path to where we thought it would, there would be an interface between that system and the building itself, because obviously it has to get in the building in order for it to be a source. And I think it's trying to track down any potential source, is what the thinking was.
Yeah, and that was the genesis, I think, of the recommendation. I know from my own personal experiences, once you bore down, there are paths created for things to escape.
Right, right.
And happened in my own neighborhood, when I dug utility benches and, utility trenches and basements flooded that didn't flood before. And some of my conversations with the Department of Public Health, along those lines, and they said very much be, things could be traveling through those excavations, since they're not blocked now, and they can't pack them like they were originally with bedrock. Water flows, contaminants flow, a number of things that could be flowing up and then making its way, since those things actually are under the school where they come out. You know, and that was, when I went out to see that, I didn't, I didn't know that. That was something I learned, they're actually under the school.
Right. Well, the drill holes are under the football field.
Right, exactly.
The access you're describing, the heat pumps.
They had to be trenched, though, up into the school, the same thing.
To bring that.
Yeah, trench there. So I think that was it. The other thing that was mentioned was about, you know, doing everything we could to increase air circulation. I think you addressed a lot of that.
Yeah, we've, so, I mean, part of this will get addressed again in the rebalancing, Tom, but one of the things that happened in this interim is that we, again, this is an energy-efficient building, and so it runs the fans, runs the pumps on an as-need basis, okay? That's how you keep energy down in our homes or anywhere else. So one of the things we've done in the interim is that there's these settings on the air handling systems, low, medium, and high, I'll make this simple. And so our crew has gone through and increased, kind of stepped up the amount of air circulation in the building, is sort of a transition, just to get more air circulating in the building. And I don't know if Justin or Don mentioned that when you were there. So just to, you know, kind of like turning the fan on in your house, just keep it moving. And so I think we don't believe that probably will be necessary once we get the rebalancing done, but we figured, burn up a little electricity, run the fans a little higher speed and a little longer, but we did that after, just, there was some question about that, so we did turn the fans up to a higher level, just to get the circulation occurring more. Again, that's sort of.
Did you do that recently?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Like?
The last two or three weeks, Don, I think, we adjusted the fans on the heat pumps. So, yeah, so I mean.
So before, I visited the building?
Yes, yeah. So, I mean, Justin just mentioned to me, you know, that, I mean, in some parts of the building, you actually, you know, hear the fans, I mean, you can sense there's more air circulating. Again, I don't know that we believe that's really gonna be necessary once we get the balancing done. Might not have been necessary now, but we figured it wouldn't hurt. Again, because, you know, we just, you know, just speed the airflow up and get it to circulate better. And some of the comments you made earlier, Tom, about some stagnation in the air, well, that's probably a product of the balancing, you know, because it should circulate fine. In other words, there should be fresh air throughout the building. And so, you know, that'll be addressed, and so, again, these accelerated band speeds may not be necessary, but we'll let the experts who do the balancing dictate that for us.
Yeah, and since you mentioned that, you know, I went out to visit Casey so I could learn. That was my idea, I've been trying to learn more and more about this, as we hear the concerns addressed by our staff and community on their health concerns and air quality concerns in the building. So I tried to go and just learn, and I really appreciate Don and Justin walking us around, answering the questions. But, you know, to me, as I mentioned before, the air did feel very stagnant in the building, especially in certain places. I made the comment to Justin when we walked from some of the main part of the building into the gym, that it was like walking out in fresh air, because the gym was so much more, I mean, it was very noticeable. The ventilation was so much better than the gymnasium and the rest of the building. In fact, I could, I could, I could smell from the kitchen the odors across the whole school. You know, greasy odors and things like that, not just next to the kitchen where you would expect it, but I mean, far corners upstairs of the building. So I think there are issues with the ventilation not working properly there, and still not enough airflow, even with the recent, you know, adjustment of the air quality. So I've been, as you know, communicating with the Boulder County Public Health Department, you know, from emails that, that this Michael Ricken has sent a number of years ago, and so I started communicating with him to get some, you know, feeling of the levels and what was considered, you know, dangerous, so on and so forth. And some of that I shared at the special meeting. And so I had some other questions, and so I thought, well, I'll just, I'll just call him, you know, and just talk to him, and actually was able to make contact with him day before yesterday. And, you know, I spent an hour on the phone with him and was able to process through, ask a lot of questions. And, you know, I put, I took, you know, like, five pages of notes, you know, over the hour that we discussed this. And I'm not gonna go through all those, but there are some specific points here that I'd like to share with you and the board. One, he said, and he's been involved, I guess, from early days with this building, that Casey has a very sophisticated ventilation system. And we need to get it set up so that it is indeed positive pressure, and the air is flowing in the building. And he couldn't, he stressed that over and over and over again, that, that, you know, that is one of the first things to do.
We agree.
He, he also recommended continuous monitoring, and he said he's been recommending that for a period of time, they recommended that to you and the staff for continuous monitoring. And looking at, you know, hydrogen sulfide with instruments that are sensitive to levels less than a part per billion, and he shared with me that he's found those instruments. I don't know, seemed like there were some issues finding that level, you know, in the test.
Not the last time I talked to him, but we can check with him.
Yeah, so I talked to him the day before yesterday, and he said he'd found those. And he recommends some constant monitoring to get a baseline of where we are now, not just some sporadic testing, you know, over periods of time, but with some constant monitoring. And it seems reasonable to do that, to see what the baseline is, to see if when we do all this air balancing, has anything changed? You know, has gotten better, worse? I mean, how are we gonna know? I mean, I think, you know, we're doing all this work with the hopes that it'll get better, but without any real good measures until we get down the road to find out if we're still getting symptoms reported by people or not. So I think it's very important that we do some level of constant measuring. Maybe we don't need to do it over a whole year, maybe we'll do it over a period of time, and I think that's something I'd like the board to weigh in as to how long that would be. He also, you know, and this addresses one of the things that Shelley was talking about. He recommended what the Boulder County Health Department calls a survey of symptoms. And he said he had discussed that with you. And I asked him what that was, and he said that the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has a standard set of derived questions, they can do it online, they can do it anonymously, they deal with medical information and private information from people all the time, that's their job, that's what they do. And that he strongly suggested that surveying people's symptoms, you know, staff and parents' children, to understand really, so we really know. And it would also establish, I think, you know, a credible source of individuals have collected this independently for our community to get confidence in, here's what people are saying. You know, we've received lots of emails, we've heard lots of people come and talk at our meetings about some of the symptoms and illnesses that they're experiencing. I think, you know, a third party doing that, especially a party that that's their expertise, that's what they do, governmental authority, would, I would highly, highly recommend that. He also said that I needed to talk to, you know, he's a certified industrial hygienist. He said, "I also need to talk to this Dr. Van Dyck," you mentioned in the report here, Mike Van Dyck, right? That is actually the, I think he's the section chief of environmental and occupational health and toxology with the Colorado Department of Public Health. You had that in your report.
Right. We met with both of them a week ago.
Right. That was my understanding. And so he gave me the contact information, I placed a call into him, and I was actually able to make contact with him this afternoon. And, again, talked with him for about an hour. Very interesting conversation. He did reiterate what you said, that he had attended a special meeting with Mike and with you and staff about this issue. He said that, given the test results that he's seen, which I guess is the Quest monitoring, is what he was provided with, that he didn't have a concern about the long-term health effect, which means such as cancer and heart disease and things like that. But he said he didn't know enough about the conditions of the test. For example, what were the occupation levels of the room? Were they completely empty? Did they have children in there? Were there twice the number of children as normal? You know, was, you know, what was happening? Said, so that was a big missing piece in interpreting.
Well, we provided, we can follow up with him. I mean, we've got the times of day, so we know exactly what was going on in the rooms. So maybe he just didn't gather that data, but we have it available for him. Sure.
That, well, good, and I think that's an important piece.
It's a clock in the afternoon, obviously, we have, yeah.
If we actually have that data.
We ran it night, days, and weekends, and so we have it when it's occupied, we have it on weekends when it's been unoccupied. I mean, that's all, if you've taken, if you've gone into the documents, look, it's every four minutes, over a 10-day period of time. So obviously, if it's a school day, and it's in a classroom, and there are children in the classroom, but we can provide that all to him if you'd like to.
Because what wasn't apparent to me, when I looked at the data, and he mentioned wasn't apparent to him, were there children in those classrooms? Were they having double, you know, a project, were they a double number of students? I mean, we walked in classrooms when we were there, that there were, there was no one in there. You know, some of the classrooms that had issues of concerns that we had been communicated with were empty, or they had just a couple of kids in there.
We certainly could go back and look at the schedule.
And so I don't know if, I mean, if we can have the information, he said that that would really help him, make a better determination. He also said that he did not feel comfortable with saying that the school is safe. And he said, what he meant by that is that, that we've only seen the responses of a few people that have gone to the occupational doctor. And he said that, that he strongly recommends a survey of symptoms that they do at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to understand the health concerns. And that, he said they've done this at a number of Denver public schools. So they have done this before, it's not new to them.
Yeah, over a decade ago, they did.
Yeah. They can do it online and anonymously. He said that there would be ways that he would want to structure that, because, because, you know, at any given time, a number of people have headaches regardless of where they are. And so by the questions they ask and the things that they do, there, you know, as any was any statistical, scientific survey, they can draw out that information. they can draw out that information, but he said he strongly recommends doing that. And, and that he, he wouldn't say, quote, "The building is safe." He will say that, given the test results he's seen with the qualifications that, 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 based on, on, on that limited data set, that, that, that there are no long-term health effects. But he, he also said that he was a strong proponent of continuous monitoring. And so that we really know what we have.
I'll follow up with him, it's not what he recommended to me, but I can follow up.
He also said that, you know, some of the things have been reported like eye irritation, nose burning and similar type systems, symptoms that aren't acceptable for the workplace or schools. I mean, he just flat out and said that.
So they're pretty similar to our other middle schools according to our health data.
Yeah, he said it's just not acceptable and certainly we would agree with that. He said that also the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has certified industrial hygienists on staff, they have toxicologists on staff and that they are there to, to consult with us, to help us, you know, know what to test, you know, know when to test it, what the monitoring says to help us interpret the data, not only from industrial hygienist standpoint, but also from, you know, a doctor's toxicologist standpoint, what it does to the body. And he also reiterated that we need to fix ventilation problems and, and that, that his comment was it's a hard problem. And I think we probably know that already. But he was, he, he mentioned that, that I guess he's coming out to that April 2nd meeting, he told me.
We've invited him, it's on his calendar, we invited both, both Mikes to that meeting. We have not set the program together as to who's going to present or what they're going to share, but I mean, we just haven't gotten that done yet. We're trying to actually find someone who has some expertise in the pediatrics area that you mentioned, and so we may or may not find that. As you can imagine, they all bring different levels of expertise and somewhat different opinions as well.
Yeah, I, I, obviously in their, their different experts. You know, Shaughnessy isn't an expert in toxicology or industrial hygiene.
He wants, he wants medical people around him when he does this.
Although, by the way, both of these guys said for, for balancing the system, for the ventilation, Shaughnessy is the guy you want, so he knows what he's doing. But they said he's not industrial hygienist, he's not a toxicologist, that's the strengths that they bring.
He says, "I'll do buildings, you do people."
Yep, and they would, and, and they do that for free and they'd be willing to support us.
Yeah, that's why we've been using them, yeah.
As a.
You're like free.
Yeah, he said, as a consultant in supporting Boulder County Public Health, that, that's a service they provide. So that's something that, that, that I believe is a very important step that we move forward on. So I think, you know, relative to some of the comments that were made, like I mentioned earlier, I appreciate everybody coming forward. I appreciate Catherine's comment on, on controversy, you know, and, and I would even, I, I would even take that a step forward. You know, it's been said, there's no growth without conflict, you know. So I think it's good for us to, to weigh these problems, to talk about them, we can, we can disagree. I think it is important that we do have the, you know, the recognized experts in the field that do this for a living, a part of our team, you know. I, I, I think it's critical, as, as has been mentioned by Tina, that we, we build trust and, and expedite this resolution. I mean, if, if children and staff are, are having health problems, we need to move as fast as we can to solve this problem. And, and any actions that we do, I think will, will, will help, help build confidence and, and, you know, things are open with increasing transparency and, and then, and then that will, that will help to get consensus on this issue. So, so I spent some time thinking about this and thinking what, you know, what, what is this board's role in doing that? And, and certainly given the situation and, and that we face with, with some of the, the rumors that are going on, the mistrust is going on, the, the claims of lack of transparency. I, I sketched down here a, a motion that I think that the board should, should consider. And, and it's multiple parts. So I wanted to hand this out, there's, I got copies for all of us and Bruce, as well as one copy for Sandy here, since she's the board secretary and we'll have to actually, actually have to keep track of this. So let, let me read this and, and I am offering this as a motion. Mike told everybody gets a copy so they can follow along. But I have to make the motion and there'll be second, let me make the motion first. Yeah, okay. So I move that the Board of Education directs the superintendent to perform the following actions to address air quality concerns at Casey Mill School. Number one, and there's several parts to this, that we immediately implement the, the following recommendations of the Boulder County Public Health Department and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And there's three of these that we've actually discussed tonight. The first one, A, is to conduct an employee and student symptom survey implemented by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And as I mentioned, that they will do that free of charge. B was perform continuous air quality monitoring on gases and contaminants that typically cause identified symptoms over a period of time that is determined by the Board of Education. In other words, I'm not saying it's a year, I'm not saying it's a month, I think this board needs to weigh in as we get started, how long we would like that to continue. C, secure the services of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, certified industrial hygienist and toxicologist to evaluate the toxicity of air quality testing results, consult on potential sources of reported symptoms and report the results to the Board of Education. So that's the first item, you know. The second would be two item I have here is continue efforts to increase air circulation, establish positive pressure in the building, negative pressure in the Casey sewer system relative to the building and implement other recommendations by our ventilation consultants. And that's what you've been talking about, Bruce, I don't think that's anything new. Number three, secure the services of a qualified industrial plumbing consultant to conduct a full survey of underground piping at the site, including the sewer and geothermal piping system. So, so that's the motion.
Is there a second? Shelley? Oh, yeah, and now it's time for discussion on, on the motion in multiple parts. And so we can make amendments, we can approve it or not approve it, yeah. So please, Tina, discussion.
So I'm going to ask a couple of questions, some relate just to the whole motion, we'll extend newer to the board. But the, the, on number three, why do you feel we need to do the plumbing consultant? Because I just, I've heard enough, I, I don't, I'm not as convinced on that number three.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you why. So I had a long discussion with this Dr. Van Dyke at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment about, about that. He's, he's actually offered to come out and look at it and inspect it. But what he was telling me that any, any excavation like that, and I mentioned this earlier, can cause areas for any seepage to occur, liquids, gases, that would normally flow, flow, say, under bedrock, maybe flow down from, you know, he mentioned, you know, old mines in the area or, or, he mentioned a building not too far away which had problems year ago, years ago, and I don't remember the details, we can ask him about that. But that it, it, it would behoove us to really understand what might be coming up through the soil, if anything. And, and inspecting the plumbing, making sure it's handled properly is just, I think, a wise thing to do. It's some, something that we ought to check off the list. I know there have been a lot of concerns about it. He, he wasn't necessarily adamant about it, but he, he thought, he said, "That's certainly a possibility," and he's seen that in, in a number of sites before. So that's why I put it on the list.
And the other thing is, is there, I mean, this, one thought I have is, and I feel like number two is being done, so I'm not as concerned about number two, I could, is there a way to turn this into something that's just a little more collaborative with the district? Because there's just so much background knowledge and it was, it was very clear to me during my visit that Don knows what's going on and, and it's clearly Bruce knows what's going on. And I don't know if it needs to be a board, not a district thing. And so it was kind of getting back to what I was saying about a monitoring group that might be more, I don't, just if we could say, okay, we're going to do these things and there'll be a board member involved in some of the discussions and not a lot, because I don't, this is taking up a lot of people's time and it's taken up a tremendous amount of people's time already, that probably would be better off, you know, strategic planning, to get something that's more of a collaboration so that we're not creating another isolated communication line? And that would be, that would make me very worried that then we're getting information that Bruce isn't at the table with and then we have to kind of go back and reconcile that information. So that would be it.
And I, I didn't mean it that way, I, I didn't mean it to set up a separate item. I, I meant to, that, that Bruce is still in charge of all this. You know, it's that, I felt like as a board, we need to say, "Go do this." And, and so the board, you know, speaks as one voice. The, the superintendent is still charged with doing this, coordinating with it, working with Colorado Department of Health and the Boulder County Department of Public Health. But that's why I didn't say, "Do anything they say." I said, "Do these things that they have recommended to do." Monitoring, survey of the health symptoms and then, and then utilization of, of their experts in industrial hygiene and toxicology, you know. Again, that would, that was meant as a collaborative thing. I wanted, I mean, the, the information will go to the superintendent, I wanted the board to have the, since we're making the motion, to have it available to us, you know, anytime we'd like to see it. And that's why I put it there, it, it would still be managed and by the superintendent.
Okay, and I mean, I just, it's sort of the same thing with the monitoring, I don't even, I don't know if we're the right body to determine the monitoring, if that could be a body that is, also includes the school community somehow.
Yeah, I, I mean, I thought about that a bit and I didn't want to say monitoring forever. I didn't want to say monitoring for a month. And so what I was hearing from the community and hearing from these experts was, we need to do some level of continuous monitoring. I don't know necessarily what that is. I think as we go along and we see how it progresses, that's why I wanted the board to say, okay, this is good enough, let's stop. Or we need to continue this upon recommendation of superintendent, recommendation of, of the Department of Public Health. That's why I put that in there and, and be happy to reword that in, in that way or however way you would like to see if it's, if it's more comfortable.
I mean, and one thought I have is, you know, we often create committees like the Budget Committee or an Educator Effectiveness Committee that has a board member or two and has, the superintendent has a, a department or district staff. And this is really specific and I wonder if it would make sense just to create a temporary KC committee that would look at these issues and explore them, because I'm, I'm not totally sold on number three with the plumbing. And it would probably, I, I would hesitate to direct this, this specifically without more discussion, I think.
Okay.
Because I think all these ideas have merit and I'm, and number two is being done. But I, and I, I mean, I'm sure we'll hear also, but what would be the, sort of the, the pros and cons of A, B and C? And then, but I, I would like the idea of some kind of committee that had board representation and district representation so that they moved through this process together, just through the next thing, but anyway, I'm going to stop now.
No, no, I think you've, I think you've asked some really good questions. Bruce, do you have a comment to this?
Well, a couple of comments, one is that, so our conversation with Mike Van Dyke, who Tom just referenced is a source from the State Health Department. We were presented a copy of the staff survey, there is not a student survey. What he indicated is they could probably create something and reach out to families, because obviously it probably isn't students. So we can follow up on that, we've actually seen a copy of the staff one. One of the things I did ask him, I said, "Has this been validated? Have you checked for reliability of this? What data do you have on your analysis as a statistician on that?" And he said, "Well, we really haven't." So we looked at the survey, we're not sure, I mean, Susan Rowley, we looked at, so we can explore that again. But, you know, we weren't opposed to the notion of gathering the data, but this isn't an instrument that's been widely used. We don't have any comparative data, but we could look at it, we are not aware of any student survey, we asked him about that. What he indicated is that we could reach out to families in like a Google Doc. But again, you know, you've all done enough of this to know, if it isn't the right kind of question, it may not be a valid instrument. So I would just, the other thing I would say is to maybe Tina's point about this plumbing piece. I mean, the reality is, we'd have to do probably an RFI on this to see who has expertise in this area and what it is they're looking for and what the cost is and probably we'd need to bid it. So just, there could be some timeline associated with that. To Tina's point, we have a standing committee working on this, that's a KC committee. And it involves our expertise, it involves the County Health Department, involves Mike Van Dyke. They both are at the last meeting we had with that. Jeff, the executive director of the County Health Department was there as well, so we have another meeting set. So we are, we're doing a group like that and we meet regularly and talk about communication strategy and the, these very things we're working on. And obviously, Richard Shaughnessy's not there, but those of us that communicate regularly with Richard are there. And so when there are questions to follow up, we follow up with him. And so one thought would be, I mean, obviously, do what your pleasure is as a board and we'll do what you ask us to do. But, you know, if it were the pleasure of the board to have a board member sit in on that committee, you would be welcome. It's not, it's late afternoon, evening, so you'll add a meeting to your day. But, I mean, I just want you to know, we've got all the people around the table doing this now, we're meeting every other week and usually 90 minutes at a time and that's why we are where we are, is because we've been working pretty hard at this. And Susan Rowley, our health director, is a part of that discussion. But if, you know, to Tina's point, if a board member would like to join us, you'd be welcome. Or if you want to rotate that responsibility, we hope that they don't have to meet a lot longer. We're really hoping that we're going to get this nailed down and be done with this work in the near term. But I just want you to know, we have such a committee. It's actually not a committee, it's a work group.
Is that it, Bruce?
Yeah, I'd be glad to comment on any of these others. Again, I think as Tom mentioned, we're doing most of this, which is what he acknowledged.
That was my sense too, yeah. Anyone else?
I forgot to add, thank you, Tom, for doing this, because this is great and I think the, the Department of Health stuff is really valuable and it's something that needs to be discussed, there's, so I, and how we do that, I think, is the question. But thank you, I mean, that was just a, some great information.
Shelley?
So Tina, I just want to understand your position, you, you don't necessarily think, think that these things don't need to be done? You just wish it was, the conversation took place in a different place in, in this committee that maybe Bruce is talking about? Not necessarily something new, but the existing committee. Well, it seems to me that these conversations have taken place, right? You already discussed the surveying, it sounds like.
We, we have discussed it, yes.
Yeah, and so you've decided not to do it because it hasn't been done?
We didn't formally decide not to do it, we, I mean, I am concerned about the validity of it. And, but we, we can go back and revisit it and maybe they have other, and we actually ask if you have other instrumentation or other health departments around the country that maybe actually have validated the instrument and have used it on air quality issues, because it's really not pertaining to what we're dealing with. I mean, you could gather symptoms out of it, but we could look at that again and we could, I didn't push Mike to say, would you go, I didn't task him to go look for better instruments around the country, but we certainly could do that if we really think that's important. But again, I, I think I just, what I don't want to do is collect data that isn't a valid and reliable measure, because it could take us down a path that isn't helpful to us. And so, I mean, I have that same level of expectations around the medical professionals we're working with as well as mechanical professionals we're working with. So I'm not saying we can't find a survey that does that, but I know how you collect data, especially in this kind of format, really matters if you want it to be valid. And, and one of the concerns I had is that we don't, as a state, have state data across schools for air quality to do comparative analysis, which we just don't, and we don't have this survey data. That's right, a decade ago, they did do some surveying in the Denver Public Schools as a part of a grant, I think, is what Mike explained to me. So, so there is some data, I wouldn't call it baseline data, but, I mean, it doesn't mean we couldn't do it. If we think it would have value, I mean, I always just want to say, what we have done consistently with staff, so that's not survey, is that we really have repeatedly advised them to access medical assistance, assistance through workman's comp. And I reported to you two weeks ago now, probably seven staff members did do that. So, you know, I think if folks are feeling the need to process that and go see the, the doctor, they've done that. And, you know, we repeated it again and we could go Thursday, I'm not saying, I absolutely know everyone has done that, but really, the surveying could be helpful, but really what we want is if they have health conditions, one, we think you should go to workman's comp and two, we'd like to have them work with a doctor. So, but if we think surveying is helpful, then we could do that too. I just want to be sure we have good instrumentation when you, when we do it.
Well, I think since, you know, the Department of Health has done this with adults successfully validated surveys, it's probably not a big step to be able to do this with children.
No, I'm saying they have not done that, Shelley, they do not, I asked about, no, I asked him that and he said, "No, we have not validated it, we have no statistical analysis of our survey."
Okay, but they do it, I mean, they do it regularly, it sounds like they have an online survey that, is that what you said?
We didn't know, all I need to follow up on that, Shelley, that's not the communication I had with Mike, but I can follow up on that.
Let me tell you, because I questioned him on that, you know, at, at some length. And again, it's not an air quality survey, it's a symptom survey, it's to find out what are the, the issues that, that people are feeling.
Right.
Nose burning, eye irritation. And, and the idea of getting that source of data is so the industrial hygienists, the toxicologists can look at it and say, what are some of the things that can cause this? And he has done it on adults, he told me, he said he has done it for Denver Public Schools, he told me that directly, I wrote it down. And so, so he has used it before.
Yeah, he's used it before.
Asking about students and he said he would do it differently with students, because with students, they tend to be influenced by what they hear. You know, and, and you have to approach it differently with students than you would with, with staff. But he said he would want to get a large participation, otherwise it's not a, a good survey. And I said, "Well, with our staff, you know, we can say, you know, you guys go and take the survey, it's a requirement." That wouldn't be an issue, it's not the same obviously with, with parents and, and children. So again, you know, it, it's meant to say, okay, we have an independent body and, and these guys- So, again, you know, it's meant to say, okay, we have an independent body, and these guys, you know, the Department of Public Health, this is what they do. They have expertise in doing this. And what are the symptoms? And we've got the staff services, and that's why I put that into motion, to look at this and say, gee, okay, you know, it may be this, it may be that. These are consistent with, symptoms are consistent with this particular contaminant, you know, this particular, whether it's benzene styrene or whatever it may be. There have been some reports about that. I know when I walked around the school, you know, I was in one of the rooms with the teachers, and I asked him, I said, you know, do you notice the air here? And he said, yeah, I have, you know, my eyes burn a little bit, and my nose burn a little bit, and, but some of the, some of the teachers are getting really sick. You know, and, you know, that's all the questions I asked him. So, so there are a number of people that are experiencing symptoms. They don't feel necessarily that it's bad enough to go to the doctor, you know? But it's not an environment we need to have as a school district, you know? I mean, I did a remodel of my kitchen just recently, had to pull out my kitchen sink and pour out the pee trap, and man, that odor immediately, you know? And if I have an odor in my home, you know, I go and solve the problem. I don't want to live with that odor. If it's something bad in the refrigerator, man, we take care of that. And I think we should be the same diligence as the school district. We don't want anything that's hampering education, the quality of instruction, or the ability of our teachers to teach. That's why I put it in there.
Good news on your kitchen. You know, I mean, I understand, we've all done a little bit of that. Anyone else? Jim?
Shelley, sorry. So, just to follow up on the symptom survey, you know, it seems like we're just taking some of what Colorado Public Health is saying, you know, and saying, well, they're saying that the school is safe, but we're not also taking their recommendations.
They actually did not make, I just want to make it clear, Shelley, they did not make a recommendation.
They did not?
They made a suggestion to us. There was no recommendation to do this survey.
Okay.
We were just brainstorming on other things we could be doing. Mike Van Dyke was in the room. He said, well, you could consider doing a survey. I said, you got a copy of the survey. Here's a copy of the survey. We got into discussion about it. I said, has this been validated? Do we have other samples that you've run it on? So that was the conversation. It was not a recommendation. I mean, if they'd have made a recommendation, I mean, I'm not saying we can't explore. I just want you to make it clear, it was not a recommendation.
Okay.
When he was in the staff meeting a week ago.
Well, you know, I could go through these one by one, because I have the same questions about monitoring. It's like, what, how would a board member on this committee change anyone's mind about continuous monitoring? I mean, it seems like the, you know, our teachers have suggested it, the parents have suggested it, they've suggested these surveys, they've suggested industrial hygienists. None of those things have happened, so what's going to make them happen, if indeed the board wants them to happen?
A vote is a vote of the board.
So a motion like this, right?
You direct me to do it, we'll do it. Well, no. I mean, you direct me to run continuous survey for $65,000 between now and the end of the year. We'll call Quest tomorrow and make the order. I told you what it costs. That's all it takes, is four of seven votes. You just direct me, I've had no direction from the board on this. You direct me to do it, or you want to follow Dr. Shaughnessy's recommendation, do intermediate testing? You advise me, you direct me, it'll happen. I don't need a committee to do that.
Okay.
We don't think it's necessary, but if the board wants it done, and wants to invest those resources, then all you need to do is have a motion and vote on it.
Well, I would just say, too, that, you know, I've heard that the EPA will come in and do tests for 450 volatile organic compounds, and I don't think they charge much of anything. So I don't think Quest is our only alternative here, and I think maybe...
Quest would not do VOCs beyond what they've done. You're right. And I would have to check on EPA to see what their availability is.
Yeah.
And there are thousands, so I don't know what 400 they check, but we could check.
I don't either. But I think that that's worth asking, because Quest isn't the only game in town, you know, for sure. And that there are other people that do this.
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Is that an amendment to this motion that we check? I mean, is that, is that a, is that a change to the motion, Shelley, that we check, have the EPA?
No, it's number, it's B, perform continuous air quality monitoring. And I'm just suggesting to Bruce, there might be a cheaper way to do it, since he's recommended Quest at $65,000 each.
So, so do we, so I'm really confused about what we're, I mean, it seems to me like this is a little, a little too detailed for my taste, because I, too, have concerns about, first of all, I haven't really, I mean, I think we're getting to a he said, she said about what the Department of Health said, so if we're acting on Department of Health recommendations, I wonder if we couldn't get something in writing for them, or have them come to our board meeting and tell us that that's what they would, that that's what they would recommend before I voted on it? Because I'm a little confused about that. And I do, I do, I don't, I know enough about data collection to know that if we don't have a control, then the information we're getting shouldn't be that, isn't going to be that reliable. So we would also have to, we would also have to survey whatever the survey is. We, first of all, I'd like some check on whether the questions that were being recommended to give to people is good, so I'd like some check on that, if we're going to do this. And then I'd like to know what other, you know, we'd need a control school. We couldn't just survey KC, because I think we've established that these symptoms could be caused by a number of things. So, so I would think that we would need, I mean, I think, I think if we want, if we want to sort of do a sense of the board and say it's worth pursuing, but I, but I'm not really, if you're not happy with the reliability of what the Department of Health is willing to do, I've got, then I'm going to suggest that I have questions about that, too, and that we need, I would like to see the survey that the Department of Health would give before I vote on it. And I would like to see the Department of Health's exact recommendation, and I'd like a chance to talk to the Department of Health myself before I voted on this. And then, I'm concerned about the cost. I mean, KC is not the only school we have in our, in our district, and I, I'm starting to feel like we're spending an inordinate amount of time on a school in Boulder when we have other schools. And I, these kinds of issues happen in other schools, and I, so I'm really concerned about the expense. So, so if there's a way to meet people's, to meet people's requirements with less expense, by all means, if the EPA is willing to do that for very little money, I would rather do that before we go into the continuous air quality. But I wouldn't want to delay any of the repairs on KC while we wait for the EPA to be able to do this, this thing. And then, I think we have, I mean, I'm not sure why, this is, this is just a lot to take in at one point. I'd almost like a fifteen minute break to read this stuff.
Well, or another option could be to, you know, roll it over to next week and have a chance to really look at, I mean, to our next meeting.
I would like, I would prefer to do that, actually, because this is a lot to think about, and I just don't feel like I have enough information. So the certified industrial, so, so the certified industrial hygienist, and toxicologist, I don't, I sort of don't know what they'd add to the mix, why this is different than what we've already done. So that would be my other question, is how is this different, what's different here than what we've already done besides the survey? I mean, the people we've had coming in are not qualified.
Do you want me to?
So, those are just questions I would like addressed. And what specifically, we would want the certif, certified industrial hy, I mean, I'd like to know what sort of expertise a certified industrial hygienist and toxicologist would bring to the mix that we don't already have, and how much we're willing to spend on that? I mean, what the cost of that would be?
Zero.
Um, zero.
Zero.
What, zero?
The cost of that.
The cost of that.
So we have that, so then I would still, I would like to see the Department of Public Health's commitment to do that for us.
Sure. So let me ask you a question. Bruce, are you working with, on point number C, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment? Are you working with their staff members?
Yes.
Have they been included already to evaluate the air quality, the toxicity of air quality testing results?
They have had them on their desks since fall, and they have attended our staff meeting, our working group meeting. Both, everybody that was named tonight has been in these meetings, and we've been in conversation with them. So I've elaborated on, they, I mean, I sent you a note a week ago that said they don't think there's any long-term effects, given that quality. That was Mike Van Dyke, who made that recommendation in our meeting. And he's the one I had a conversation about the validity of the survey with. But I'm more than willing to follow up and see if he can present some information on the validity of the survey, or, like I said, if he's not confident that he can assure that, that we look, maybe there's another state that has that. We're not opposed to doing the survey. I'm opposed to using a survey that isn't a valid and reliable measure, because it could give us misinformation. But I'm, I wouldn't say we've exhausted that. We didn't know that we thought it was incredibly necessary, and it was a suggestion, not a recommendation, but I'm comfortable. We've got another meeting set. I'd be glad to visit with Mike Van Dyke, Dr. Van Dyke about that. I mean, I think actually we're doing most of these things, with the exception of this plumbing thing. And I guess that, you know, we could visit with Mike. He didn't, we talked about the heat exchange system in the meeting. This is not something he recommended to us, but I could get follow up. You're right, if he's willing to give the time, he doesn't charge. I mean, I'm sure he's got a lot of work to do, but we could certainly follow up on both the survey and this plumbing issue. And I don't, that I probably don't need a motion. If you just tell me to go ahead and do it, I'll follow up on those two points. I think the other one around the ventilation and the air, I mean, I think we're doing those things, so, and I've assured you that that's in process, so. But, I mean, I'm more than willing to follow up on the survey, and in this notion of the plumbing. If we, if he's got some ideas about how we might examine that, I probably will put him on the phone with Dr. Shaughnessy, actually, because I think, you know, they bring different levels of expertise, and I think Dr. Shaughnessy would be glad to visit with him about it. So, again, if you want to take a motion and direct me to do that, otherwise, I just, we could just add that into our work group's activities and proceed.
So, is it still my turn?
Yeah. What?
Oh, I'm willing to, I think I, I just would, I would just really like some opportunity, I mean, I feel like, I would just really like some opportunity to ponder this, because I just don't even know what to think about a lot of it, except, except we're, I mean, except the things that we're obviously doing. And so if we're going to vote on this, I would really like to vote at our next meeting and not this meeting. I don't know.
Jim?
Yeah. Thank you. So I'll be brief. I'm not sure about the value of number three. I appreciate the superintendent's willingness to kind of explore it, instead of open-ended it, so that we know more about what we might be voting on. I think number two is ongoing. I think number C is, one C is already happening. I think on one B, I'm comfortable with Shaughnessy's recommendations. I want to see the building fixed, changed with his recommendations. I want to see the monitoring after it. And then I'm comfortable with his monitoring schedule after that, with the possible exception of, I'm still thinking of, I would like opportunity to ask him, or maybe you would, the value of monitoring some of the volatiles. You know, I think you can monitor them as a group, that gives you some indication, and if you're measuring zero, as most of the air quality tests I was reading during other comment here, they read zero the whole time, there's no need to follow up with a breakout test. If there's a non-zero reading, then maybe you start thinking about it. So I'd like, I'd like to think about what Dr. Shaughnessy would say on that. And then on one A, the survey again, with all the other concerns. I also kind of, if we're going to be doing this rebalancing, and, you know, kind of making these adjustments to the building, I wonder the value of doing it before or after. Again, I don't, I don't really know how to break that out myself. So, that's, those are my brief thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question about one A. And when we survey students about health issues, what kind of legal confines do we have? I mean, what can we do legally in terms of meeting with children? I mean, I mean, do we need to get the consent of the parents on this? And what about the question about privacy? And, you know, I mean, we've been talking about testing for a long time, about privacy concerns, and I'm just wondering about parents' concerns about this.
It's actually an issue for the legislature right now, whether they should, I just read an email from our lobbyist, saying, do we need passive, or, so you need parent permission, or do you have to have opt-out? That's actually right before the legislature right now, with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, because there's concern among some of the legislators that sensitive information's being asked, and they would rather have people opt-in versus opt-out. So that's, so I think, Lori, to your point about students, I think that, that's why the instrument design is so important, because if it's of a sensitive nature, and asking about one's health probably fits in that category, you know, I just want to make sure that there's an instrument designed to do that. And again, if they have one, I need to see it, because that's not what they shared with us. And again, then, it would be probably like the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, different set of questions. But, I mean, that's a fairly sophisticated tool. It's been developed over time by a third-party research group that does check for validity and reliability. So, I mean, again, I, I think it's one thing to have parent or staff volunteer to submit something. They've actually done that on a Google Doc. That was in the Cora request that we did in the fall, that was provided through the open records, that some staff members initiated a survey that they did on their own and distributed it. So it was a voluntary survey, if they wanted to participate. But there was concerns among staff about sensitivity around privacy, and so they weren't willing to put that information down. So, anyway, we just have to see. I, again, I just want to be sure that if we're going to ask or require staff to do something, that it's a valid and reliable instrument, and appropriate precautions are taken around privacy and sensitive questions. And, I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done. We don't, I mean, the middle school involvement in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, some districts don't allow their middle schools to participate, because the sensitive nature of the questions we have. But, you know, parents can opt out of that. So I just would want to, I just want to work with, in this case, Mike Van Dyke, to make sure that we have an appropriate instrument, and that parents are, I mean, clearly it would be optional. Faculty's a bit different, because they're, you know, adults, and they're our employees. But, so, anyway, I think there's several paths we could go with the survey piece. But I probably just would want to do some homework on this, before I would commit one way or the other to the board. And it sounds like Tom got some information in addition to what I had heard from Mike Van Dyke, so I'm more than glad to follow up with him. We communicate with him regularly.
Following up a bit on Tina, what you said earlier, which is about being collaborative and trying to have more transparency and trust in the community, might be interesting to see what the, what the community, what the committee at KC thinks about that idea, whether they think it would be a good idea.
On the survey, on the survey piece, Lori, are you?
Yeah.
I mean, we could do our homework and see what the options are, and we certainly could share it with them or with others. I would certainly be glad to share it with you.
Yeah.
I mean, we could do that informally. I don't know that we need to wait till the next meeting to get your feedback.
KC teachers already did that. The FAC sent us an email with a whole list of symptoms and number of people that experienced them. So, they did their own informal survey. Um, so, so that's been done. I, I think with this, um, you know, a, a part of the issue here is having independent third-party government agency that, whose expertise is and why they're created is public health, um, you know, uh, survey people and then the community can get on board. This is really what's happening. This is what people say, right? Now, um, uh, he did mention controls if we wanted to do that. Said you could do that, he wouldn't recommend it. They have, uh, evidence, he told me-
Did he recommend against it? I'm just-
He said he wouldn't necessarily recommend doing a control. Um, that they have, uh, enough information there and statistically to know, uh, with particularly adults, uh, what, uh, what, uh, percentage of the community will, will have a headache no matter what.
Okay.
You know, so, so they do have that level of, I mean, the Department of Public Health, it all goes all the way up to EPA, they have that source of information and they have the resources. This is what they do for a living, what they've been trained in, they are the experts. Um, my problem, uh, is that, you know, we, we've got a, a, a community that's crying out. We've got mistrust, uh, we've got, uh, questioning that, that we're doing enough and we're doing it quick enough and that we have kids and staff in danger. Uh, I don't want to wait a month to have another meeting to do this. I mean, that's why I've been researching all this to try to understand this, is why we had the special meeting, that's why we've had the reports and all the emails coming out. Um, you know, uh, collecting the information by independent third-party, uh, whether it's a, um, uh, scientific, I can't say it, statistically valid, um, methodology is less important to me as getting the information that someone has collected by this teacher group or this parent group or the district. You have now a public organization, public health organization, they collect data this all, all the time like this. And, uh, I have to trust that they know how to do that. I asked about the privacy piece, he said, "We do that all the time. We know how to do that." So, I mean, obviously, we would work with them within our confines and with the law to be able to do that.
Shelley?
Oh.
Sam?
Go ahead, Sam.
Am I in order?
No.
Either way.
Yeah, I, I mean, everybody's raising really valid concerns, but, uh, since we're already doing all this stuff, I don't have a problem reaffirming that. I'm not sure that these really are recommendations of the county health department and the state health department. You have said they've been recommended. Bruce has said some of these have been suggested. Much of it we're already doing. Um, I agree that the survey instrument must be carefully designed, and I would trust the public health of professionals working with the education professible, professionals to design such a survey. Continuous monitoring is, is expensive, but I'm willing to support it now, uh, for a number of reasons, including the peace of mind of the staff and the building and the parents. Uh, and the stuff that we're already doing, I have no problem reaffirming that by supporting this motion. Uh, the ground source heat pump analysis, it seems like a bit of a stretch, but at this point, if we, you know, if staff can develop a, an RFI and we can find some folks we can be confident can analyze it, why not look at it again or look at it in more detail? So, I can support most of this. And I don't want to wait a month either, even though I understand your concern, Jenny, about maybe wanting to process this some more, since we're doing most of it, uh, and trusting that the public health folks would work with the folks of the district to develop a proper survey. Um, you know, I don't feel qualified to weigh in on that instrument, but I trust, uh, that Bruce and his team and, uh, the folks at the CD PHE could get something together that would be useful.
Shelley?
I agree with Sam that, um, this is not a big stretch from what we're doing. We're doing some testing, it's just taking that intermittent testing and making it continuous. We're thinking about a survey, so we could just do that survey, since they know how to do it at Colorado Health. We're already doing the circulation, the plumbing, you know, to having somebody come in and look at the plumbing pipes is a logical thing to do. It's not a big stretch to do that. These are all things that people have suggested. And I'm afraid that by delaying this another month after we've already been focused on it for so long, and so many of us have spent so much time trying to understand this issue, that we cannot wait until every single member of the board feels like they have a completely, you know, total 100% understanding of it, because none of us do. That's why there's the Colorado Public, you know, Health and Mr. Shaughnessy and, and the district, you know, you know, Don Orr. It's like, there are a lot of experts on this. We don't need to be the experts. What we need to do is say, "Go let the experts do their work." And that's what I think this motion recommends. And I'm afraid that if we don't pass this, that, you know, we will look like we are lost in the, in the trees, when there's a forest out there. And the forest is that there are kids that are sick and there are teachers that are sick. And we're going to really quibble about this when that's the case? I just don't think that's what the board should be doing. We should be giving Bruce some direction on what we think he should do, and he's already been doing some of it. It's just saying as a board that we want him to continue and maybe take it a little bit further by adding these couple of other things, which we are recommending that experts do, not a bunch of people that don't know what they're doing, they're going to violate privacy rights or write a, write a survey that's not valid. Like, I completely would not expect that from the Colorado Department of, of Public Health. I think we can trust them to do their job correctly. So, I just really do not, would not like the message we would send if we don't say that we want this done.
Do you have a comment? No? Tina?
Are we, so, I mean, a couple of things, those, are we, would we have an opportunity to change the language in this?
Not if we vote on it this evening. Um, however, you could offer an, a motion and, uh, to amend this. Um, if, if you would care to offer that, we could, um, you could do that.
Okay. I mean, I'll just say in general what I would say, and then I could figure out how to amend it. But, um, I think, I, I'm still kind of, I'm still coming back to this trust issue and about how we, people seem to be hearing and interpreting different stories. So, you know, with one A, I would, I would want it to be not conduct, but explore a survey, because I don't know if it would be employee and student, or if it would just be employee first and student, if we can figure it out, if the Colorado Public Health offers that. Um, and I just would, I would like for a board member to be involved in that exploration, that discussion, so that we don't find ourselves at the board table again with different, with people sharing different sources of information. I think some of these discussions need to start happening together. I don't think there needs to be very many. I don't think the board needs, a, a board member needs to take on the job of being in this, but I think that, um, the train of thought needs to be followed. And then, in terms of one B, I still, um, wouldn't want that to be determined by the Board of Education. I would want it to be determined by this Casey working group that then has the presence of a board member, so that it's, so that everyone is on board with that.
But monitoring?
Yeah, on B. So that it would be with district and Board of Education determining that. Um, and then C, I don't, that's not a, that's not an issue for me at two we're doing. And three, I think it should be, um, go towards securing or something like that, explore securing, so that there's just still an avenue in case the group looking at that decides not, that it doesn't make sense to do it, based on the recommendations of the people who we've already employed. So, that would be, I don't know if that makes sense. So.
So, would you like to make a, um, a motion to amend that? And we could take maybe a 15-minute break and have a chance to write up, um, some of the language, so that it could be shared and we could be, um, real clear about exactly what we're voting on?
Sandy can capture it.
We can do that. Pardon me?
We can capture it. We, we don't, I mean, we can capture it if Tina makes a motion.
Okay.
Would there be two motions then? Is that how we'd be going?
No, you would, you would make a, a motion to, I mean, we could look at every one of these points, one, A, B, C, two and three. That might be the easiest way. Or, what, what's your view?
Lori, just, yeah.
And then that would be the top of the discussion.
Oh, okay. All right.
Unless Tom accepts. Tom could accept those amendments, if that matters.
So, would you like to make that motion, that we make, uh, that we amend some of the language in this document?
I move that we amend some of the language in the document.
Is there a second? Jenny, second.
Point of order, I'd like to know what that language is before.
The language is, "I would like to amend the motion."
What is the amendment?
No, no, that's not-
That comes next.
Have to offer amendment. Here are the words.
To explain what the amendment is.
What?
Yeah, what is the amendment?
Now, do I explain it? Do you want me to explain it again?
Yeah, I think before you even second it, it needs to be offered as the amendment.
I would amend it, yeah.
Yeah. One point I'd like to make is, if anybody votes for the motion at any time, a person who has voted for the motion can't offer it up to rescind it in the future. You know, that, that is Robert's rules of order. If you vote for this motion and then we find out two weeks from now, something different, then you could, you could bring a motion to rescind it and change it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it is not permanent that we live this in stone from now on. Now, a person who didn't vote for it can't, can't rescind it, but a person who has voted for it can come back and say, "Hey, uh, we got some new information here. I want to rescind this motion to say X, Y, Z." So, that's just a, just a point of information.
Okay. Jim?
Another point of information, then. A member who votes against the motion can always vote to reconsider a motion at a later time, too. So, you've got both sides.
They did not go over this at the Casby training. I'll let you guys know.
Or on the board president training, either, I would say. And so, we're all kind of learning about Robert's rules of order. Okay, so, what would the motion be? You would like to do what?
So, it'd be the first sentence stays the same. The sentence number one stays the same. A, strike conduct and put in explore. And then instead of and, do and slash or. Student symptom survey. B would be, strike, perform continuous, replace with determine, and air quality monitoring plan. Um, determined by the Casey committee with members of the Board of Education. This is, uh, the Casey working group.
The working group.
Yeah. Casey working group with members of the Board of Education. And C stays the same. Two stays the same. And three stays the, uh, I'm sorry, three would strike secure and explore securing. Um, Casey work, excuse me?
Can you get three again?
Sure. Um, strike out secure and explore securing. And then at the end of the sentence, comma, with the Casey working group and members of the Board of Education.
Don't do that.
Don't, you don't want me to do that?
No, not, I just, I, I mean, I wonder about the, the, for me, I would just say, the value of having, um, several members of the Board of Education trying to hire a plumber, um, a plumber, you know? I mean, I think Bruce can do that.
Well, it's, okay. I, the idea is just so that we don't end up at the table with all this different information again. So, I'm just wondering how we can increase this communication, so that we're not, so that we're really moving together.
Well, what I would say, my, my view on this is, is that explore the idea of having the services of a qualified plumber, but Bruce will do that.
Okay. Okay.
I think that's enough. I don't think we need to be hiring the plumber.
No, we definitely don't need to be hiring the plumber.
Okay. Or even exploring the idea.
But you want, you want the Casey working group, so it's collaborative.
Right, right. I want the collaboration piece in.
And you want a board member on the working group.
Right.
I'll appoint somebody then, if that were to happen. Maybe myself. What?
I only volunteered to go to the next meeting, so I'm happy with it.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, we'll have, we'll have to think about posting it.
Are we talking about, which work group are we talking about? I'm talking about a staff group in this building.
No, we're not talking about that.
She's trying to clarify. She's talking about the working group.
Yeah, so that's not the group that's going to be able to do this work.
Oh, no, I was talking about the staff working group.
All right. Just want to make sure we know what we're talking about.
Oh, staff working group. Sorry, I thought you meant Casey staff. My mistake.
He called it the Casey committee, but then he said it was more.
So, it's not the school-based committee, it's the staff in this building, is what I was referring to.
So, you want a board member on that committee?
For these discussions. Not necessarily, but at least for these discussions.
Good idea.
Is there a second?
I need a second. Second. Those are good ideas, Tina.
Any further discussion?
Lori?
Tom?
Could, could I get, um, Sandy to read this back, so I really know everything that's in here? What is the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education directs the superintendent to perform the following actions to address air quality concerns at Casey Middle School. One, immediately implement the following recommendations of the Boulder County Public Health and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. A, explore an employee and/or student symptom survey implemented by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CD PHE. B, determine an air quality monitoring plan on gases and contaminants that typically cause identified symptoms over a period of time determined by the Casey working group with a member of the Board of Education. C, secure the services of the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, CD PHE, certified industrial hygienist, CIH, and toxicologist to evaluate the toxicity of air quality testing results, consult on potential sources of reported symptoms, and report the results to the Board of Education. Two, continue efforts to increase air circulation, establish positive pressure in the building, negative pressure in the Casey sewer system, and implement other recommendations by our ventilation consultants. Three, explore securing the services of a qualified industrial plumbing consultant to conduct a full survey of the underground piping at the site, including the sewer and geothermal piping, with the Casey working group with a member of the Board of Education.
Any further discussion? Shelley?
I think with the change in this language, we're no longer following recommendations of Boulder County Public Health. We're, we're completely taking this out of that realm, so that shouldn't be a part of the motion. And I'm also still not clear, I don't know if this is the time to ask this, but I'm still not clear if there's a board member on this committee, like, is the goal of that to, to make sure that that board member can come back and has one story about what's happening? Is, is that the idea, that the board member's mainly a liaison to, to the board from the committee?
I think so.
So, it's not to, it's just to make sure they are exploring, they are, is it, is it have any accountability role in this at all? Or, or can we expect any of these things to happen as a result of this person being on the committee?
You know, I mean, that's a great question. I, so obviously, I'm just thinking about this right now, but I think the, they're, just by attending, there's usually an accountability aspect to it, but part of it's to be hearing the same thing, so that we're all on board and it, and there's someone on the board who's moving with the district with this discussion.
And you don't think that could happen just by having somebody on that committee and going with the motion as first stated?
Um, well, I still would want to change some of the language with the motion first stated.
Would any of, what would not be changed if you knew there was a board member on the committee?
Um, I wouldn't say to conduct, I would still say to explore the symptom survey, because we have the word student there. And I would say to determine the plan, because Tom had mentioned he may not need continuous through the end of the year. So, if we could do a 30-day period for less money and still feel, have the same confidence and build the trust with the community, it would make sense to do that.
And isn't that covered by the clause after the comma?
Over a period of time.
Determined by?
Yeah. Oh, and I'm, but I'm not sure the Board of Education should determine that alone. Because it kind of gets back to the plumbing issue. I'm not sure, just like, I, I mean, I don't know how to determine that. I mean, I would have, so I don't know who can, because by doing it with the Casey working group, they can draw back on the commas made by Shaughnessy, which no board member has had insight into. And so, as a board of education offering independently to come up with an air monitoring plan, I just don't think it makes sense for us to get educated into history like that. I still think the lead should be the Casey working group, but with input from a board member.
Yeah, and I don't think as a board member that I would ever say, "Let's stop this testing," without something from the Casey working group saying, you know, "There's no more symptoms, the air's clear, we don't need to do this testing anymore." It's like, this board wouldn't cook up that shut-off without that kind of information. So, I, I mean, I think that's already here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, what's the end summary that you come up to then, on B?
Well, so, I'm, I'm just feeling as if, if, you know, what Tina really wants is somebody on that committee to be doing the liaison work and to be understanding, so they can come back with one voice and say, "This is what's going on." And I think that that can be accomplished by just putting that person on the committee and still going forward with the motion as written. Because then we could involve, we could say, "These are Colorado Health's recommendations." We can involve them, they could do what they know how to do, and the board would not be a part of that. It's not like the bar, board has to explain to them what to do. They know how to do that. And we would just be saying, "What did you find out?", which is our role.
So, Lori, we might actually ask them to give us a set of recommendations, since we might actually ask the Colorado Department of Health to give us a set of recommendations, since we don't have those? They've not presented any to me. We don't have anything in writing. I've got a draft of an email right here to Mike, asking for that. So, I mean, maybe we ought to get recommendations from them, and then maybe we ought to follow up.
Um, all of a sudden, I'm with you 100%.
Maybe, not tonight, but-
Let's just ask them exactly these particular issues, on the survey question, on the air quality, how long that they recommend monitoring, and, um...
Whether we need the plumber or not, yeah.
Lori, we need to take action on the current motion, or we need to withdraw it.
I'm sorry.
Before we, we need to either take action on the, on the current motion to amend, or[1694.73] Before we, we need to either take action on the, on the current motion to amend, or we need to withdraw it before we amend it again.
Right, okay.
Are we still in discussion period on, are we still in discussion period on that amendment? Could I say something?
Sure, Tom.
So, I think I understand what you're trying to get at, Tina. I, I tell you what bothers me, and I thought about this for a while. Putting the word explore is no ending. We could explore it from now on. And, and we're directing, go explore this, okay? Next year, we're still, we're still exploring it. You know, I, I think our community expects us to do something soon, right now. And, and that's why I don't like the word explore. You know, I'd like to head, you know, if you want to say, you know, go do this, come back, in two weeks we'll vote on it, or, or something like that, that it's not open-ended, I would feel better. I also feel like if it's, if the Casey Working Group is really just staff, then we don't have any representation of, of the parents, the community, you know, our teachers, and it's what we already have. They're doing what they're already doing. You know, I, I, I would say, you know, if you wanted to get a recommendation to the board from them, fine, that, that's what we would do anyway, I think. But I, but I would, I would like to leave that authority to the board as a final decision, and, and, and get recommendation from staff, Department of Public Health, here, our community, and we can weigh all that and make a decision, when do we stop it, stop the testing, for example. So that, those were my thoughts when I, when I was trying to craft this in a way that, that, that would actually get the community to the point that they're feeling some confidence, that we're, we're really, here's the way we're going, boom. You know, that's, controversy, fine, here's the way we're going, let's see how we do, we're going to get it done by this date and this date. And, you know, that was my, my point in, in putting this together. The Colorado Department of Health will, will do whatever we ask them to do within their realm of capabilities, you know. I don't know about, you know, when I talked to Mike, he said he did push really hard on this recommendation, so he said, he said something different to you. But, I mean, that's what he told me, he pushed really hard to do this, this symptom survey. So, you know, I'm just going by my, my conversation with him.
I guess what I would say is I feel more comfortable hearing directly. We've heard a couple of different stor, words about what has been recommended, and I think before we act on it, that we should really be more direct with them. And what I'd like to do is, I mean, what I would suggest is that we, what we should do, I'm not talking about the motion, but what we should do is consult with the Colorado Department of Public Health on these three matters. One, about a survey, what they have, what they would recommend, how to do it, dealing with the question about privacy, deal with the question about parents. I mean, I, those, those are very, I, I'm going to vote against this unless it's only explore, because I, I'm not going to ask a student to take this instrument yet without really seriously considering the, the feelings of parents. So that will, I will vote no on that, on this motion as, as it is because of the one plank. But I am interested in what they have to say about it, and I would like to see the instrument, and I would like to deal with the reliability and the validity of it, and the parent concerns about it. So I would like the Department of Public Health, Colorado Department of Public Health, to deal with this, to question the survey, to talk about how long to monitor, based on the conversation with Shaughnessy, and, and to deal with the other staff that we've got, which I think Bruce has indicated that we're already doing, is that we're dealing with their toxicologists to deal with the tox, you know, the toxicology. So for me, I would like to know more clearly from the Department of Health, and I'm really glad we're all kind of looking at what the possibilities are and consulting experts. I mean, I've checked with my own experts, they've got some other ideas. I haven't brought them all forward. But what I would do is just say, I'd like to direct Bruce to go check out the Colorado Department of Health regarding the three topics that you've mentioned, because I think they're all good topics. But I just think about the language that we're using here is, is too prescriptive without, you know, with, with the concern about too much direction, not enough direction, what exactly the recommendations were. I think we're already doing, number two, I think it'd be fine to, to have a plumbing consultant take a look at it. You know, I just think as part of all of the work that we do in the building, you know, we've heard from a number of, of building people in the construction business who have multiple ideas about it. You know, I want Bruce to check every single one of them. And it's, it's, so it's a little awkward to pull out one comment, so.
So, I, I have some ideas that I think will satisfy some of these concerns, but I think we got to deal with Tina's amendment first. Either, you know, she withdraws it, we need to deal with that first, and, and then we can go on.
So I think I'll withdraw it, right?
Yeah, fair enough. Withdraw the second? Who had the second?
Oh, I like the amendments, I'm not withdrawing the second.
Well, let's pull it back and let's start over again. I mean, I think that's what we're doing. You can remake that same one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so here are my thoughts.
Yeah, and she pulled it back, yeah.
We could modify this to ask the Department, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to propose the methodologies of employee and student survey for board approval.
Propose methodologies?
In other words, that would come to us, we could see what they're going to do, we like it, we don't like it, change it, whatever. I would want to do it though soon. I don't want to wait until the middle of April to do that. I'd like to, you know, have a meeting set up for that in the near term, as soon as they could put that together. But, but I think that would help some members' concern over, what are they doing here? Let's have them come and tell us. How would you propose to do that? I mean, he told me, he, he needs to tell you too. And that's fair, that's fair. And certainly I could accept that change in, in the motion without having to do an amendment, if you guys would accept that.
I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I agree that you talked to them, none of the rest of us did, so it's only fair that everyone has the same comfort with their recommendations. I would agree with that. And I also agree, though, this cannot wait till the next board meeting, because we're, we're about to vote to cancel the March 24th board meeting, so we are now out into April after this already dragging on for, you know, five years. And I just don't think that's appropriate. So I think if there's a way that they could maybe inform us in a letter even, what they would do, that would be fine with me. I don't need them standing at the podium telling us what they want to do. So, I mean, that would, that would be fine with me, so.
You have a second, so that's good.
So I have a comment. And this is just a procedural thing, and I know that other people don't care about procedural things that much, but one of my, I mean, if you've talked to me about my big objections to what goes on in the Jeffco and Dougco boards, one of the things that absolutely drives me nuts is that they don't follow their own procedures. And our procedures call us for, for us to introduce a motion one meeting and vote on it the next meeting after we've all had a chance to talk. That is our, that is our, that is our total habit. We rarely vote on things at the same meeting. And that way, we have an opportunity for public comment, we have an opportunity to get all the information we need. And so, this is just a procedural thing on my part, but I'm, but, but this sort, the, the reason we have staff to carry out stuff is because it takes boards a while to act. And the reason it takes boards a while to act is because we need to deliberate. And I'm sorry if it takes a long time, but that's just the way boards are, and our staff has been on top of stuff, our staff is already doing this stuff. And I just feel like, I just remind myself of the Dougco and Jeffco boards, and I don't want to beat those boards. So I'm opposed to this motion just on, just on, just on the grounds of good board practice.
May I address that comment?
Actually, if I may offer, is that a motion to table to the next meeting?
Yes, it's a motion to table to the next meeting. Is that, I mean, that, that would be-
Yeah, that works.
Does that work?
With a second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this discussion, and to take some of the language, I think.
You don't care about what's going on in Casey? We have, we have got to go to school every day until you make this decision.
Excuse me?
I'm leaving, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's unbelievable to me. Children, teachers are going to school every day there until you have your April second meeting, people. You are amazing people, you can do this today.
Thank you. There, it's been moved and seconded to table this till the next, what does table mean? Table, what?
Oh, I thought you did, you did not, he did not.
You made a motion. Is there a second to table this?
Okay.
So, now may I address the comment? I think, I, I
Sure.
I think it's important, because you have concerns. I've actually researched this, Jim mentioned this last time. In our policy, the only thing that requires us to hear it twice is when it is a policy or a change to a policy, nothing else.
It's our practice.
Well, it may or may not be, but that's the policy of the board, and that's our procedures, that's what we go by. So, so that, so that, you know, just for a point of our, that is what our policy says, not anything else, and so don't think it does say anything else. The second thing is that we've been talking about this for a long time and trying to process it. I mean, not only has this been going on for years, we've had meeting after meeting, we've had a special meeting in time since that. I mean, it's not that we haven't talked about this a lot in front of people. So, I'm sorry, Jenny, I have to disagree with you on both of those items.
I would like, I would like to respond to that. It's permitted, but it is difficult for board members to get a document and respond to it on the spot. And that is what feels uncomfortable to me, is that I'm being asked to vote on something without having had time to think about the pros and cons of a student survey, for instance, or a plumbing consultant, without notice, but to be just passed out and said, Lori, I'd like you to vote on this, because I've checked with someone from the Health Department. So what I'm suggesting is the, the points that you are making, I think are relevant points. They're about the health and safety of our children.
Yes.
And every single person on this board feels strongly about that. And every single one of us has, has expected our staff to follow up on every one of these points. So for me, the struggle is the motion and the very specific, precise, demanding action that we demand. I mean, if you read, immediately implement the following recommendations. So it, it's, it, it leaves no leeway. It is so directive that it, it doesn't allow for any sort of consulting. So that's the reason why I feel uncomfortable with this, and don't appreciate just having something just show up.
Okay.
Further, as we've talked about it, that the staff is doing these things short of the survey, in my opinion. We don't have the plumbing consultant, I believe, but we are doing the air quality monitoring. I think we'll wait, in my judgment, it would be better to wait for Shaughnessy to say what he recommends after the air monitoring is implemented. I also don't know what continuous means. Does it mean 24/7 on three floors and in a basement?
Absolutely.
And in every room?
It means continuous monitoring as recommended by the Boulder County Public Health and Colorado Department of Public Health. It's under, sub, bullets under there. They've recommended continuous. I'm not about to tell them their job, what rooms where, all that kind of stuff. I expect they have that expertise to come in and say, okay, here are the issues here, the concerns, we, we think that would be one here, one here, one here, one there. So that's why I didn't say everywhere I said recommend, that's from them, that, that's, that's, that's their services. And, you know, I understand what you said, and I'm willing to say, let's, let's ask immediately for a proposal from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment on conducting the survey. And, and then if we don't like it, we can say, no, I'm, I'm willing to make that change without any amendment or anything, I'll make that change.
Well, I think it's, well, anyway.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Sure, Shelley.
I'd just like to add that I have your same concerns about student privacy. In fact, I have been a huge advocate of privacy in this district. And there is no way that I would do this without parental consent. So you should, you know, that is assumed for me, and if that was to go on without that, you know, assumption, I would be totally opposed to it. So just know that from my point of view, that's all going on.
Good, okay, yeah.
Right.
And I apologize, my assumption was they follow the law. And just, like, we all have to follow the, they follow the law, there, that is the law. Student privacy, HIPAA records are the law.
So what they suggested was a Google Doc, just so you know. That's what Mike Van Dyke suggested was a Google Doc, which is not a researched, validated instrument. So there is no stu, I mean, I just emailed him, I'll ask, ask, I asked him for a copy, an online link to both surveys. What he told us is they would use a Google form or a Google Doc to survey the students, which, so I'm not saying they wouldn't follow the law, but I'm just telling you, there's not an instrument.
All he told me is online survey, and that's even more reason to say, hey, bring us a proposal to do this. And then the board can evaluate that proposal. It sounds like that's what's, people are uncomfortable about. And, you know, again, I'm willing to, to change the wording to, you know, ask the Department of Public Health to bring forth a proposal for a employee and student symptom survey. And, and that would be fine with me. I certainly understand your concerns.
And they don't even have to be identified by name. There's no reason we have to know, you know, which child's having nosebleeds. So there, there doesn't have to be any personally identifiable information associated with this to start with, so just.
Okay, so where are we?
So are we willing to ask the Department of Health to come forward with written recommendations on all of these issues?
No.
Just the first one.
Just, just the first one.
So, so we don't care about what their monitoring recommendations are, or exactly what the public, the certified industrial hygienist would do?
Yeah, 1A, B, and C would be included.
So then we don't care about their recommendation about the plumber?
That's not under, yeah.
So that wasn't one of their recommendations?
That, that is not the way I worded the motion. The A, B, and C go to the recommendations of the Boulder County Health.
So, 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 so I'm not concerned with what you worded, I'm concerned with what you meant. So they didn't recommend, so the county health department did not recommend the continuous monitoring or the plumber?
They did recommend continuous monitoring, that's why I have it under number one.
Oh, wait, isn't that, oh, I'm sorry.
See, number B is under number one. As far as the, the industrial plumbing, they suggested that that may be a source. So that's why I didn't put it under there, because it's not like they brought that up. They suggested that it's something to look at.
Okay, so that is a recommendation of the, so we would want that as a recommendation from them, because that is, they did say that was a recommendation, so.
But it seems to me you cannot conflate the Boulder County Public Health Department and the Colorado Department of Public Health. And so I guess what you're saying, Tom, is you're confident that both organizations have recommended these specific things?
Well, first of all, that's what both told me, and what the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment told me is that they perform this as a service to the Boulder County Public Health, because Boulder County Public Health has the authority for this area, and they perform that as a service for Boulder County Public Health.
And the Boulder County Public Health has recommended continuous monitoring?
Yes.
And they have recommended that we hire this consultant, the certified industrial consultant, the county health department's recommended that?
They, they have, they have offered those services to interpret the data and give us recommendations. That, that's who they have on their staff. They said, you know, tell me who you have on your staff.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the language. Implement the recommendations of the Boulder County Public Health Department. And I'm just wondering if the Boulder County Health Department actually recommended all three of them. I don't want to get stuck with them. You know, I mean, I don't want them to come tomorrow and say, we didn't recommend that.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I
You spoke to someone at the State Health Department.
I talked to them, I, I took notes.
The county health department?
Yes, Micros and Environmental, you know, Certified Environmental Hygienist, Boulder County Public Health, on, on the 9th of February, have it in my notes, that's what he told me, you know. So, you know, you know, I'm trying to move forward here with a, a solution that the board takes action, and that the community can get behind it, we can get transparency and, and some level of trust back into what's going on here. I think that's disappeared. And, you know, our parents, teachers are asking us to do something, you know, I mean, 150 emails, I mean, lots of stuff. I mean, so, you know, I, I didn't try to wordsmith this a lot or think of all the legalese. What I thought of is, let's move forward and do something, you know, and direct it as a board, not just say, superintendent, go take care of this. That's not what our community is wanting to hear. They want the board to take action. I believe the board ought to take action, this is what I've proposed. I'm willing to change some things because of your concerns. I think they're valid.
So what are we voting on now, or what would we be voting on?
So I, are we wanting to make a motion to amend the language, or for your original motion?
I think, you know, if Shelley and I agree, we don't have to make a motion, we can.
Okay, so I want to be clear that then 1A gets changed to say, ask the Colorado Department of Public Health to bring forward an employee and student symptom survey, that replaces what you currently have as 1A?
Bring forward is a proposal to implement employee and student survey.
Okay. And all A, B, and C, right? It's not just A, bring forward a proposal, it's bring forward a proposal for all three of those things, or not?
Yeah, that's why I want to make sure I got that word.
That's not what I was thinking. I was really thinking about A because of, of people's concerns. You know, I, I think it's pretty clear that they have told me that they'd like to see continuous air qual or monitoring for a period of time.
Just wanted to be clear.
To, and we could put it, over a period of time determined by the Board of Education from recommendations of Boulder County Public Health. I could add that on there, if that's all right with you, Shelley.
On B, if following the-
Yeah, just add, over a period of time determined by the Board of Education with, from recommendation by- um, from recommendation by Boulder County Public Health.
Or in consultation with Boulder County Public Health.
Either way, yeah. I mean, something that we're not just going to say, stop, or.
Right.
It's like, you know, tell me what's appropriate.
And it is your sense that Shaughnessy is not in this, that you're saying we're going to let the county health department make the recommendation to us?
For the, uh, for the monitoring where industrial hygiene and toxicology is, is involved, that's their expertise, it's not Shaughnessy's expertise. Shaughnessy's expertise is mechanical air handling systems, balancing, working with those to get appropriate results, not in industrial hygiene and toxicology.
So that's what I'm thinking, oh.
Shaughnessy's in charge of, you know, recommending for the district what they do on item number two.
Yeah.
So we want the health department to talk to us about?
A, B, and C.
How long, about number B, about how long we should monitor?
I want a recommendation from them, that, that was the intent. You, you tell me.
Bruce?
So I might suggest that you pass a motion that directs the superintendent to secure a recommendation from the state and county health department in these three areas, and they'll submit it to us in writing. I forward it to you and I execute it.
What about two and three?
Well, I think you've already affirmed that two is fine, so take it off. But the areas that the survey area, the plumbing, and the toxology, or the point one C, why don't you just have me secure a recommendation on these points from the health department and direct me to do them?
Well, first of all, I don't want to take away two and three. I think everybody's agreed, at least on two, that's what we're doing, and the board just affirms that, that's what Sam says. It's our ventilation consultants, which is Shaughnessy. And it's just the board getting behind this, I don't want to take that off of there. Um, and I, 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 I do think we, we ought to, um, you know, um, plan to get services, somebody take a look at the plumbing, you know, and, and how that system is put together. I think that's something we can just check off.
So that's a recommendation to the, the health department, though, you said, Tom, right?
No, no, two and three are not related to the health department at all.
I thought you said they suggested that.
No. Number one is, is, the health department suggested that would be a good idea, but I'm not asking them to.
Okay, I thought you said they recommended.
To, to give a recommendation or doing it.
You're saying they suggested number three, but you're not asking for a recommendation?
No.
Okay.
No, and I didn't want to tie them to that, I was just using that as one of my rationales for putting it there. I, I personally think that's a good idea.
I do too.
And, and that's enough, I don't, I don't need to bring them into that, nor would I necessarily want to, I don't think that's their area of expertise.
Right.
You know, their expertise is in industrial hygiene and toxicology, that's why the A, B, and C are in there. And that's the reason I worded it that way. A, um, you know, let's get a proposal from them and how they would do it, and, and that the board can either approve, change, or disapprove, okay? B, I want to see happen, continuous monitoring. I mean, if you want to take out recommend by them, I don't care, I want to see that. And, and I think our community wants to see that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mike Rick and Richen and, and Mike Van Dyke both said that they would like to have more data, continuous monitoring. And, um, and, and let's take the advantages of the services and the expertise they have, that's what number C says.
Right.
You know, and toxicologist.
So you just want them to bring forth a proposal then on the survey?
Yeah.
So that we can understand how they're going to do that, make sure it's in line with all our expectations?
That we're all okay with that. Yeah, and, 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 you know, I, I wouldn't want to see that soon, not in April, obviously. Yeah.
So then Sandy, you had it right, that's just related to A.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And I've inserted the word, so I'll read A again. Ask the Colorado Department of Public Health to bring forward a proposal for an employee and student symptom survey. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think probably to be acted upon by the board, I think I'd like.
To add that at the end?
At the end, yeah. Because I think we want to act on it, not just bring us something, just want to be clear about, we will, but I just want to be clear about it.
To say whether it's appropriate or not, given our HIPAA and privacy guidelines and everything else.
We say, do it, don't do it, change it, whatever, you know.
Um, would there be a time constraint if our next board meeting's April 2nd? So you couldn't act on it before?
Um, I, I, I would really encourage this body to do something ahead of time. I, I don't want to complicate the motion with that, but I think this is urgent, we need to do something as soon as we can get it scheduled, as soon as they can bring a recommendation. And, and, and I would, you know, I would defer to our agenda committee to set that up at the, at the, at, at as soon as possible time that's appropriate, not April. Don't rea-, I trust, I trust that, I don't want that as part of the motion, I trust that. I trust they'll do that.
And then, Tom, did you have changes to B?
Um.
Did you want to move the, over a period of time determined by the Board of Education?
Upon recommendation of the Col-, the Boulder County Public Health Department.
And just add that to the end of that sentence?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would then read, perform continuous air quality monitoring on gases and contaminants that typically cause identified symptoms over a period of time determined by the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Colorado Department of Public Health.
I'd just like to suggest too, that that, there'd be an RFP put out for that too, that we don't just go with, you know, who we've gone with before, but that we do a complete overview of who might like to come forward and do that testing.
Would you like this part of the motion or just to be understood by this group?
I think just to be understood, that, that there needs to be.
The superintendent will do that.
Yeah, the superintendent will do an RFP, RFP for that, because we might be able to get it cheaper than $64,000.
Yeah.
So I still don't understand why we, why we trust the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Boulder County Public Health Department more than we trust our own staff and our own experts, but.
They are the experts.
They're not, we're not toxicologists.
They are state and local experts for public health. What else can I say?
Well, plus, but we've consulted with them and they have been at the table all, all along, so.
They are.
I mean, we have taken their recommendations, I think, on many things.
Well, it's unclear that we have, that's what this whole discussion's about. It sounds like they've made some recommendations or suggestions that we haven't done, so what we're trying to do is clarify that.
Yeah, what did you recommend?
Yeah. What, what are you saying that we should do, not, you know?
Okay. Okay, so Sandy, could you, um, speak up and tell us what, how it looks now?
Okay. Do you want me to read the whole amendment again, or do you want me to just do the two paragraphs we're changing?
Um, would you read the whole thing again? Please?
Immediately implement the following recommendations of Boulder County Public Health and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. A, can, um, ask for the Colorado Department of Public Health to bring forward a proposal for an employee and student symptom survey to be acted on by the Board of Education.
To, excuse me, could you, just a little bit louder, to be acted on what?
To be acted on by the Board of Education, okay. B, perform continuous air quality monitoring on gases and contaminants that typically cause identified symptoms over a period of time determined by the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Colorado Department of Public Health. C, secure the services of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPE, Certified Industrial Hygienist, CIH, and toxicologist to evaluate the toxicity of air quality testing results, consult on potential sources of reported symptoms, and report the results to the, the Board of Education. Two, continue efforts to increase air circulation, establish positive pressure in the building, negative pressure in the Casey sewer system, and implement other recommendations by our ventilation consultants. Three, secure the services of a qualified industrial plumbing consultant to conduct a full survey of the underground piping at the site, including the sewer and geothermal piping system.
Thank you for reading that, thank you.
Could you read the again?
So, I'm just, hey. Tom, I appreciate that your understanding of these is that they are recommendations from Boulder County and the state, but that's not the understanding of others, so could we say, uh, implement the following recommendations in consultation with the county health department or something? Because we're, we're, we're saying that these are definitely their recommendations, and you're the only ones that's, that's talked to them.
Okay.
Not that I'm saying you're an unreliable source, but other people are understanding it differently. So that, I'm just a little uncomfortable with saying these are their recommendations based on one person.
So I think we could, Sam, strike, just say, immediately implement the following, and strike out the rest of that, and say, A, you know, um, ask the, um, the Boulder County, or the Colorado Department of Public Health and Safety for a proposal on implementing employee and student symptom survey for action by the board. Perform, you know, um, monitoring on gases, kind of, so on and so forth, secure the services, so on and so forth. You know, I think.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah.
So just strike everything?
And, and, you know, that's a good point, you know, you, you just heard me, and they talked to me on the phone, and, and I certainly don't want to misrepresent them.
Somebody heard them differently, so, yeah.
That's fine.
So can we just, after recommendations, strike the rest of that?
Yeah. Uh, immediately, uh, implement the following, strike it out all the way to the colon, and then start with A as Sandy read through them.
So do you want me to reread it all again?
Sure.
Okay. Immediately implement the following. A, explore an employee and/or student symptom serv-, oh, sorry, let me start over, I'm on the wrong draft here. Immediately implement the following. A, ask the Colorado Department of Public Health to bring forward a proposal for an employee and student symptom survey to be acted on by the Board of Education. B, perform continuous air quality monitoring on gases and contaminants that typically cause identified symptoms over a period of time determined by the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Colorado Department of Public Health. C, secure the services of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPE, Certified Industrial Hygienist, CIH, and toxicologist to evaluate the toxicity of air quality testing results, consult on potential sources of reported symptoms, and report the, the results to the Board of Education. Two, continue efforts to increase air circulation, establish positive pressure in the building, negative pressure in the Casey sewer system, and implement other recommendations by our ventilation consultants. Three, secure the services of a qualified industrial plumbing consultant to conduct a full survey of the underground piping at the site, including the sewer and geothermal piping system.
That's good for me.
Good job.
Okay.
Comments? You okay? Bruce, you have any comments on this?
Nope, if it's the will of the board, I'll do it.
Okay. Um, I, I'm feeling more comfortable now that we're going to have an RFP on this testing. Um, I feel very uncomfortable just surveying kids without knowing what it is we're doing with them. I think, I, I do think that this last point about the plumbing consultant is a little extra. I mean, I'm, I'm just not sure that we. We may already have somebody who's doing some of this work. Um, so it feels, um, I mean, and I also don't know what the price is, and that feels a little uncomfortable to me. But, uh, given that, um, I think I'll probably vote for this.
So our vote would be to approve the amendment first, and then after we've approved the amendment, if that's approved, then it would be to approve the motion?
Yeah, I think since Shelley and I agreed on the changes, that we don't have to approve an amendment, since I, I offered the motion and she seconded it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure what we're taking vote on.
Thank you.
Okay, Sandy will call the roll. Please.
Albright?
Yes.
Belleville?
No.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. Well, I've lost my agenda. The next item on our agenda is the National Board Certification.
So I've asked Mary Jo Bode and, Shelley, are you joining? Just Mary Jo, Mary Jo, sorry. Mary Jo Bode is our Director of Professional Learning for the school district. And so we thought it appropriate this evening, since we recognized 14 highly qualified Boulder Valley School District educators for their exemplary performance and their completion of the National Board Certification, that maybe you should know a little bit more about that program. So, uh, anyway, Mary Jo, thank you for being here this evening, and I know that you've got, have some comments prepared that you'd like to share with the board regarding the National Board Certification, so please, Mary Jo Bode.
Thank you. President Albright and members of the school board, first of all, I think you're amazing, so after listening, I appreciate your process, so. But I'd first like to tell you that I'm really honored to speak tonight, after attending, and most of you were there, at the National Board Certica-, the certification, um, um, reception. It was really inspiring to be able to hear the teachers talk about the process. And I was really humbled with how hard they worked and how frightened they were about failure and all sorts of things. They were very honest in their feelings about going through the process. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to celebrate that our district supports that and our, to tell you that the vision of our professional learning department is to continue to support that type of program and that course. When they, um, that, tonight, Ron Cabrera spoke about John Hattie's work in visible learning, and that the effect size of having a nationally board certified teacher in the classroom is significant. I want to share with you just a few other things that Hattie said. That Hattie says that, um, one of the things that's really important is that having a nationally board certified teacher in the classroom means that students are allowed to be more innovative in their learning. And additionally, he notes that they, a teacher who has gone through certification is actually able to adapt instruction in response to student needs and to understand at a deeper level the reasons for student successes or struggles with learning tasks. And he continues to talk about in this book, which I think is, when you talk about analyzing 80 different tests and to come up with really deep analysis, the thing that's interesting is he says that nationally board certified teachers challenge their students, they engage with their students, and they inspire them without boring them, which I love that statement. But one of the most profound things that Hattie says about board certified teachers is that they truly do make a difference in the classroom. In the process of becoming certified, the teachers that we recognize tonight questioned themselves, they looked for evidence of success and gaps in student learning, they worried about their students' progress, and they explored ways to improve learning for all of their students. And Hattie's research concludes with one of the most powerful statements to me is, that what does a nationally board certified teacher bring? They bring passion to the classroom. And this journey of exploration that our teachers have taken, that those 14 teachers took to reach that, shows that this work and the work that we're doing with educator effectiveness are so terrifically aligned. You could have talked about standard four and five of our educator effectiveness and marked everything that those teachers said tonight, which is just truly inspiring. Those standards require teachers to engage in professional practices that will have positive impact on student learning. That also is based on current research and student needs, and it asks them to apply those in new and different ways and to evaluate their impact on students. Our state standards and our district standards also ask teachers to contribute this knowledge. And if you heard tonight, one of the things that Virginia said is now go be leaders, now go share this learning, now go celebrate with others. And when we actually look at the core principles of the nationally board certified program, it is truly rewarding to see how their work mirrors our goals and expectations for our teachers. There are five principles. The first one is that the teachers are committed to students and their learning. Secondly, the teachers know how to teach those subjects, and they know how to teach those subjects to children. And those teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. Teachers also need to be able to think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. And finally, the teachers are members of a learning community. It was exciting for me to be able to be there in the presence of those teachers and to actually, to be able to share with you once again, just the work that they have done, and to highlight the connections to our educator effectiveness work, to our strategic plan work, and also to our now and future professional learning work. So thank you.
We're honored to be the school district that has 20% of all nationally board certified teachers in the state of Colorado and exceeds all other districts in the number and the quality of our staff. As I mentioned in our presentation and celebration this evening, our tagline is excellence and equity, and we're working really hard on the equity side of that equation, and we have excellence throughout our system. And I think the National Board Certification is just one example of that. So I join you in celebrating the success of those educators, their commitment to our students, and the high performance of our students is a reflection of the incredible educators we have, teaching in our classrooms and also leading our schools. So thank you for listening to the report.
Great. Comments?
I'll be brief. Thank you for staying through our meeting and giving the, as Sam said, it really is a highlight seeing those teachers. And I think for me, I enjoyed the teachers who said, "And I failed the first time, and I came back and did more, because I just wanted to get better." So all the teachers are impressive. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I would just add, you know, Virginia Scheck has been a longtime coordinator of that program, and so she's, she herself is an exemplar educator, was recently honored this fall for her outstanding Teacher of the Year award with her era, her discipline, and the coaching and support and leadership she provides these educators, on top of all the other work that she does, is just, again, a credit to her and to the school she works at Boulder High. So we have lots to celebrate, and Virginia is with us each time we do this, but really a role model for all of us as an educator.
Good. Any other comments? Thank you, Mary Jo, for coming. Thank you, and sharing those comments and observations about the program. We're proud of our district teachers and that program, so thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is action items, consent grouping. 7.1, personnel items. 7.2, approval of minutes, February 24th, 2015, special meeting. 7.3, approval of minutes, February 24th, 2015, regular meeting. 7.4, acceptance of donation, Mesa Elementary School. 7.5, approval of the prevention intervention collaboration agreement for services. 7.6, approval of Series 2015 bonds and adoption of Resolution 15-01. 7.7, cancel March 24th, 2015 board meeting. 7.8, the Board of Education is asked to award the contract for civil engineering services for summer 2015 site work. 7.9, Boulder High School Adelante a la Universidad, the City of Boulder Human Services Fund. Is there a motion to approve? Sam, second. Jenny? Would any Board member like to poll any of the items? Seeing none. Would any Board member have a question about any of the items? Shelley?
Bruce, do you have any idea how many proposals we got for that civil engineering work?
For which work?
For the civil engineering services, for the bond, like JVA is the, I guess, the one we're going with. I'm just wondering if we had many proposals for that.
Tom, do you know the number of proposals?
Five?
Five.
So you felt like you had a good, you know, amount of proposals to pick from and all, yeah, and they were the clear standout winner?
The evaluation team felt so.
Okay. I was going to ask you, who's on the evaluation team? Is that like a SIPS committee?
From project managers.
Okay.
It was.
So is SIPS involved in that or not at this point?
Pardon me?
The committee that's going to be?
SIPS is gone.
Not SIPS, but whatever the new bond committee is.
No, they haven't.
They haven't even been.
No, not the oversight committee, but the process was overseen by Kaplan and Ernest with involvement with our procurement department.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's my question.
Any other questions? Sandy, will you call the vote, please?
Albright?
Yes.
Belleville?
Yes.
Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess? Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on our agenda, study items, agenda setting. Are there any subjects that Board members would like to bring up in the future? Sam?
I'd like an overview of our school climate data for middle schools, just to see how we've been, how we're doing now and how we've been doing over the last few years on the social and emotional aspects of our middle school students, their sense of belonging. It's been a while since we checked into that. We don't have to do it next meeting, and I'm sure we won't, but I'd like to put it on your list of things I'd like to hear about.
Good. Thanks. You can do that. Anyone else? Tina?
I don't know if this makes sense, and maybe the Agenda Committee can talk about this when you set the next agenda or for this work session, but whether we should spend 10 or 15 minutes as a Board just doing some kind of consensus circles, since we've just had a pretty eventful meeting, and if we just need to reconnect and gain some cohesion.
For right now?
No. Yeah, I'd like to tack on another 15 minutes, and I'd like to sit in a circle right now. No. But for our next meeting, should we be together again and just make sure we're sharing values and communicating well?
So Lori, can I add to that?
Jenny?
We were supposed to have a follow-up to the retreat, which we haven't done yet, and I think we left, sort of left it off our last Agenda Setting meeting, but we probably ought to do that. And that would kind of fit in what, that would kind of fit in with what Tina suggested as well, I think.
Okay. Good. Anyone else? Shelley?
Of course, I don't, I hope it wouldn't turn into a four-hour discussion, but I'm wondering if maybe we should, we could have at least a 10 or 15-minute update on Casey at each meeting from now on until it's over, till all the symptoms are gone. Just a brief update at every meeting.
Good. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no other comments, this meeting's adjourned.